Welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seventeen volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the city council. Tonight, we have five, which is a quorum. The commission advises the city council on developments, proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the commission makes a recommendation with the council having final decision-making authority. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to an appeal to the city council. Tonight, all of our items are study sessions, so there will be no action. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item tonight is a conversation about a prevailing wage ordinance being considered, and we have Compliance Manager Malik and City Attorney Manderscheid joining us.
Hello, Chair, Commission members. So my name is Zasan. We're okay? So I guess we'll just get started. So my name is Amir Malik. I work in the City Attorney's Office. And the reason we're here is in December, the city council had some concerns about a development project. They asked city staff to look into what labor protections exist for people working on city-funded projects. And we were then asked, we met again in March, and then we were asked to put together a draft prevailing wage ordinance. And we went again in front of the council in April, at the end of April. And then they told us to go and talk about the proposed ordinance with the HRA and the Port Authority and the Planning Commission. So that's how we got here. So, yeah, go to the next. Okay, so April 29th, there were a variety of presenters who came. We had a developer, contractor, subcontractor. We had people from the research community, unions. So they kind of gave different perspectives on what prevailing wage is. I can, I'll give a very quick thing at the beginning because I don't know if people are very familiar with it. What prevailing wage is, the state of Minnesota does a survey of the different counties in Minnesota, and they find out what is the most common wage paid to different types of construction jobs. So they don't go by the median or the mean, they go by the mode. So like, for instance, an electrician or so, you know, you would just go see what's the most common wage paid in Hennepin County. That then becomes for prevailing wage projects, the minimum wage you have to pay. Whatever is that most common wage, that's what you have to pay. There are other things involved, too. You have to, at the job site, you have to have a list of all the, what people are supposed to be paid. So workers could look up and say, oh, wait, I do this job, I should get this hourly pay. And that would have to be posted. And then the other part is you have to submit your certified payroll every two weeks to compliance to say, we paid these people this much money, and we're certifying that they got their money. But I'll go ahead here, I just wanted to give that kind of background, so you know what is it that we're discussing? So when it comes to prevailing wage, the ordinance is in the agenda packet. And the reason a lot of, more and more cities are using this, like there's prevailing wage in San Paul and Minneapolis and Duluth. It's like about seven cities that have it. West San Paul, I don't remember all the others, oh, Richfield. But it's because there's a few reasons. One, to make sure workers are getting paid what they're supposed to. But also, like what we heard at the city council meeting, to level the playing field for businesses. Many Minnesota businesses feel that they're not able to compete against out-of-state contractors who many times are transporting slash trafficking employees from place to place and not following labor rules. Or they're misclassifying their workers as 1099 contractors instead of W-2 employees, and then not paying for workers' comp and payroll taxes and other issues. So prevailing wage, from the research we've done, seems to be the gold standard on trying to prevent this. Prevention seems to be the ideal mode to deal with these problems instead of trying to deal with them after the fact. We presented, well, the researchers who came to council prevented some peer-reviewed studies talking about its effect on cost. Because people's natural inclination would be that, well, if you're paying this wage, then that's going to make costs go up. Research has not borne that out. There is differences of opinion. But it seems that some of the things that's, you know, mentioned on the slide that balance it out is that, you know, usually you'll have fewer injuries when you're, when you're, have things in order. So that brings costs down. They also can use apprentices who can be paid less when you're doing prevailing wage. That also brings costs down. But yeah, I guess just efficiency, so. But there are differences of opinion on what its effect is on the total cost of projects. Can we go to the next slide? So currently, you know, a lot of projects already require prevailing wage, like the, our MinDOT projects done by engineering, those already require it. It just depends. There are certain programs from the federal and state government that trigger prevailing wage. This ordinance would have it triggered, though, from any projects that receive city funding and have over, that are, the total project is $175,000 or more. But this just gives an example, so I'm going to have it. The next slide, please. Okay, so a few things to mention here. One, this applies only to construction projects. And the ordinance defines it, what construction projects are. And also, it, there must be city funds, just as an example. If we're giving some type of, I guess if you're, I don't know if you're familiar with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, something like that would not trigger it. Because if you're saying, well, we're going to, you can have less storage or something like this, that's not going to. But if there's anything where TIF, some housing subsidy, any of these kind of things, where the, you know, loan guarantees or discounts on loans, or there's a financial side, that would trigger prevailing wage. Other things, let's see here, it's listed here. Monitoring and compliance. So if this was to go into effect, the City Attorney's Office would handle compliance for it. And mentioned here what would be penalties for non-compliance. In general, what we're seeing in other jurisdictions, like our ordinance is based a lot on the San Paul ordinance because they seem to incorporate best practices for prevailing wage. When it comes to non-compliance, things that could happen is withholding some of the contract costs, some fines until workers have received the wages that they're owed. So these are the things that would be looked at. Next slide, please. We talked about city-funded, it's clear, City of Bloomington, HRA, Port Authority. And then here, what I talked earlier about the city funds. This is the list, so you'd have an idea of what would trigger prevailing wage. Next slide, please. So I talked about it earlier when we were going over like what it is. This is just, you know, puts it down in writing. But yeah, it's, there are two parts to it. Like the, there's a cash part and then the benefits part. But all the wages are set by the Minnesota Department of Labor. It would not be something set by Bloomington, we're not going to survey workers. Each year, the Department of Labor does its surveys, and they, they post on their website different construction jaws, what rate they need to be paid depending on the county that you're in. Next slide, please. So June 17th is a public hearing in front of the city council where they will vote on this ordinance. At least for me, the, I think the important part is just to hear any questions. And I'm available.
All right, thank you for that. I do have one question. This is maybe a misperception on my part, but I was under the impression that prevailing wage was already required for city projects that the city does. Is that not correct?
No, we don't right now.
Okay, okay. Questions, again, this is a study item, so Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. And apologies if I'm totally off-base, but I remember seeing something at this year's legislative session about worker misclassification and an ordinance that changed, and I believe was passed. How does that affect this? And how do those either piggyback off of each other, work together with each other? Or are they, is one making the other obsolete?
Well, I don't know what was in the final wording of it. I know, yes, I was on the committee for this with the Attorney Generals, and it went into the state. They were looking at changing rules to how you decide if someone is a 1099 or a W-2. But what, what came in the final legislation, just because everything was put together like just a couple days ago, I don't know what the final wording is. So it is something I could look into, and then we could get back to you. But I don't know what was the final wording that was put in. But that was the concern, though, that people, workers are listed as 1099 contractors when they're really W-2 employees, and then it causes a lot of problems also for the state. They lose millions of dollars from workers' comp and other problems. But I just don't know what they finally decided.
I guess my...
But it wouldn't, in our, in our situation, would it change prevailing wage? No, there are some bills that were put in front of the legislature to expand the use of prevailing wage. For instance, to have it used for li-tech, the low-income housing. I don't know if that made it to the final omnibus or not.
I don't think it did. The, I guess my question would be, if the new law at the state level is addressing some of that worker misclassification, where does that fit within what Bloomington is doing? Is this sort of obsolete? Is this...
No, what would happen is like right now, regardless of what the state does, well, I know I was told that the TIF was not passing in the state. So what our ordinance does, it does two things. One, there are projects that don't currently trigger prevailing wage, and they would now trigger prevailing wage. And it wouldn't matter what the state did, they would still trigger it. Example, if we're talking about like the Health and Wellness Center, BIG, these things would now trigger prevailing wage because it's a city-funded project, and its value is over 175,000. Other things would be the projects that already would have triggered prevailing wage, like the MinDOT or others. It would be also us being able to have local enforcement of those. But yeah, so there'll be some projects that already trigger prevailing wage. And then with this ordinance, there'll be additional projects that used to not trigger prevailing wage, and now they will.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Can you talk a little bit about what the apprenticeship classification is? How that's defined at a city and state level? And then maybe a follow-up question would be, is what's stopping employers from just having 90% of their employment be apprentices versus standard employees?
No, that's a great question, Commissioner. So the apprenticeship program, one, the goal of it is to bring more people into the trades. And that's one good thing with prevailing wage is it's, it's been shown to bring a lot of new people into it because you don't have to pay for your training. You just, you join and you're getting, you're getting paid as you're training and working. So under the law, for every four regular employees you have, you can have one apprentice. So for the company, they get to pay the apprentice less, which brings down their costs. And then for the apprentice, they're not paying for any of their training. And what's normally done is the training is paid, it's split between like, well, in general, it's paid by the contractors. A lot of contractors band together, and they have training centers throughout Minnesota for different things, like the electrical workers are in San Paul, Lyounas in Lino Lakes. There's just different ones, and the contractors pay for it. So a lot of that, then these apprentices get their training there while they're also working. But yeah, the ratio is four to one.
Commissioner Curry. Thank you, Chair. So I guess, do we know what percent of projects have issues today in the city?
Well, if they had, had issues, that would be, that would become, yeah, a legal issue. So I don't, I can't say right now. I can say that there are workers' rights groups who have said that Bloomington has had problems, and they would be happy to bring those up at the, at whatever time is appropriate. But we do, we have seen this problem in neighboring cities. I know if you've seen, it was in the news about Viking Lakes project is, there's, the state is trying to get two and a half million dollars in back wages from them because of problems with construction. So there are throughout, and we can also, if you look in the documents that were presented at the city council meeting, if those weren't forwarded to you, I can have them forwarded to you after this meeting where you can just see the different handouts that the presenters used at the April 29th meeting to discuss the problems in Minnesota.
So if it's illegal, and there's, it's, I guess I'm a little confused. So it sounds like some people are concerned about what that would do to the cost of a project, but it is apparently illegal to not do it the correct way?
So...
That seems like a misalignment.
Yeah, so right now, you have businesses that are breaking the law, and that's allowing them to bid lower for projects because they're not paying like workers' comp and payroll taxes. And this would be, the goal of prevailing wage is to prevent that by dissuading those type of contractors from bidding for projects or getting them to actually follow the law.
Okay, and are there, do we know what cities currently have a similar ordinance in place?
Yeah, well, like I said, there was a list there. I don't remember them all, but I know that Richfield, San Paul, Minneapolis, Coon Rapids, Duluth, West San Paul, and there might be some others, I can't remember them right now. But the one we're looking to follow, just having talked to others because they've been doing it for like 20 years, and people say it has a very good system, is San Paul.
And do you know what the result was? Have we seen what the results were of this ordinance being put into place in other cities?
Well, the, I don't know how you quantify. I don't know, yeah, on that side, I don't know how we would, how we look to quantify it. The, the goal is, the number-one goal, people do a program like the, an ordinance like this is to prevent the, these violations from happening.
Okay.
But I don't have, I can, I can try to ask and to see if they have done studies on it to see what changes happened, but I don't have that information right now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooked in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Malik, everything we've heard about this item, both, you know, from the speakers that spoke at council, from your presentation, from the staff report, was strongly in favor of prevailing wage. In the sake of critical thinking, what's the argument against prevailing wage ordinance?
Well, I think it depends also on, on how something is implemented. I could see how, if you're not going to give proper assistance, then you're going to make it more difficult on the other stakeholders. For instance, you know, we're proposing using, there's a software that the state uses and Minneapolis and San Paul uses, and they give like unlimited technical assistance to these contractors and subcontractors who would have to enter the payroll, all the payroll information in. I guess if someone decided not to do that, I could imagine that would make things more difficult. Like, for instance, one of the subcontractors spoke at the city council meeting who works in, she, her business is in Bloomington. She talked about using it and how, you know, easy it is for her to use it. But I could imagine that, yes, if you're not going to provide that type of assistance, if you are adding costs where they would have to like pay for the assistance, at least what we're looking from our side, and this is a cost part to it, is, you know, we would be paying for the software. No contractors, subcontractors would have any costs there, and that software provides unlimited technical assistance. Plus, based on what other cities do, if there were legal questions, they would also be able to go through the City Attorney's Office to have that. But I do think for these things that providing customer service is important. And I think that's something that city staff needs to have a clear understanding of, that there are going to be questions, and we need to provide good service.
Do we have a sense for what these administrative costs might, might be?
So when it comes, we're not looking to, that it would be needed to hire any staff. It looks like it can be absorbed into the Compliance Division. The software that we think would be ideal is looking to be, I think it was about 18,000 to 20,000 the first year because you have setup costs, and then like 12,000 to 16,000 per year after that. So there would be ongoing software costs, it's not you just buy one and you're done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, I think as you come back before council on June 17th, it's, it'd be my recommendation that we're a little more transparent about what you just talked about. There are costs and some other negatives, or not negatives, but counterpoints as to why to do this. For me, when I see a presentation that's kind of only one side of the argument, it throws up some natural red flags of, am I missing something or something like that? And like, I, I don't think I have a problem with what you just discussed, but it's good information for the public and maybe creates a little more trust when we are showing both sides of the argument. So it would be my encouragement to maybe be a little more clear about that the next time you present it.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the, it's $175,000 threshold. How did that number come about?
Okay, so $175,000 is the limit for when projects then have to go in front of the city council. So anything more than 175, it has to go in front of the city council. Under 175, the city manager can sign off on it. So that seemed like a good middle ground for, for, for something like this. But yeah, it, city council could choose a different number if they wanted, but we thought that seemed like, just the way Bloomington does business, that seemed like a good number.
Thank you.
Remind me, Mr. Planning Manager, if that number is, is that number in our next item or our third item for, where we're talking about streamlining approvals? That's not looking to change that?
It is not.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. One question that I have is, so far, we've talked a lot about the city and the contractors. With this prevailing wage, is there any resources available to the employee or the 1099 or whatever we want to classify them as? For them to raise their hand and say, I feel like I've been in a situation that I don't, I'm not compliant as an employee to this.
Right, so what would happen if, just want to go over a little bit how enforcement would look like?
Yeah.
So a project is a, it's a prevailing wage project. Some, so for city projects, you know, there are project managers. So each month, project manager, somebody from the City Attorney's Office, would go out and interview workers at a job site. So we would have had, for instance, we were told there's going to be 50 employees who are there. We go there and we see 100 people working. Then we would realize that something's wrong, some of the people must be off the books, something's happening there. We interview employees, we see if there are problems. Also, when they enter the information into LCP, if we use that software, LCP tracker, it would also identify if any people had been paid the incorrect wage. But yeah, interviews are a part of it. So you go through different, there are different phases of construction. So we would show up during the different phases of construction to interview the employees. And so that's why I've done a lot of employee interviews, but not in the construction realm. So that's why it would be, you know, me or a paralegal along with somebody from like engineering or utilities would go with us who has the technical knowledge, too. And then we would be interviewing them. If anybody had, if we found any violations there, we would start investigations. But of course, you know, with the wages and everything listed, so they would, the workers would know it's prevailing wage project, and they could just submit a complaint directly to the City Attorney's Office. and they could just submit a complaint directly to the city attorney's office.
This is a good conversation. I, I will be honest, I, I was, I'm shocked as a city, we have not done this on city, wholly city funded projects already. I, I know many places that are smaller and less forward thinking than we are that have been doing that. So at least at the city projects, like a wholly funded city, but like this building, I would have, I'm just shocked that that wasn't already the case. So, and I think the, the things you've talked about, the thresholds make sense. I think it is really about, you know, will it have an impact on project cost? Probably. But is that, that cost is likely coming from people who've been exploited. And more often than not, those are people who are probably new to our country and may not have the paperwork to be doing these jobs. And the employers know that. And we had an, we had a situation near my place of work last year where it was very clear that was what was happening at the project and it was a, became a thing. Not for my place of employment, but for the people who were looking to move into that housing development. And so it's happens, it happens a lot. And so I think, from my opinion, I, I support this because I don't think anytime our tax dollars are at work, we should be supporting anything that's, regardless of your situation about how you're here, anything that's exploiting a, an employee for financial gain of a business is not something I would want us supporting with the city dollars. And so I think this is pretty straightforward. It's not, it's not onerous. It's not big, heavy, you know, hard to understand. And so I think this is good work. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. I mean, I agree, but I also agree with Commissioner Cookden. The presentation seems very, I don't know, I guess one sided because I, I'm still kind of confused how this even happens. How if a contractor gets up and talks about some, a project getting too expensive, are they basically admitting that they're breaking the law? Like, I don't understand how that argument works. So I don't know. Seems like I'm missing something, but it, it seems pretty straightforward that we should have something like this to protect people. So.
Chair members, this is Melissa Manderscheid, the city attorney. Hope you can hear me okay. Thank you to Amir for presenting tonight. I have a quadruple booking, I think, tonight. So I'm trying to be in a bunch of places at the same time. I wanted to mention a couple of other things that I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of. One is the Let's Talk Bloomington. I appreciate the feedback on the, on the presentation and we did cover some of that in previous presentations. What we have been told is that materials cost what materials cost, labor generally costs what it costs. And so when cities are getting bids and one of them or two of them are dramatically at a different cost, that's a red flag because there aren't too many ways to save a ton of money. So we want to be conscientious about that. And this will be an additional tool to be mindful of projects that are using public funds and that we can hopefully ensure that the law is being followed and, and workers are being provided with not only safe working conditions, but also reasonable worker protections as well. The other thing is that the Let's Talk Bloomington website was launched last week and it is a portal that's available to the public. We use all the various modes of receiving feedback. This will be an ordinance. It's scheduled to be an ordinance in, in June, June 17th at the city council. And so it will be, you know, the typical format that way. But we also created this Let's Talk Bloomington as an additional way for people to participate in a more informal setting that doesn't require them to testify live at a public hearing. So one of the thoughts is that if folks can get that information out there and encourage people to submit feedback and comments, that that will be an additional way for people to participate and express their, their thoughts or their concerns about an ordinance like this. I will say, you know, as you mentioned, the, there are a lot, a wide variety of communities in the state of Minnesota that are already using this in addition to the federal government and the state. And the two that Amir couldn't think of are Duluth and Rochester, which are very similarly sized cities to the city of Bloomington. So thank you for letting me jump in and thank you to Amir for covering for me tonight.
So this is a study item, so it's not anything that we vote on, but I think would be helpful for the staff. Do we have a sense of, we think this, we've given feedback. In general, we think this is largely on track or more work needed? Just kind of a general sense of the commission? Commissioner Curry?
Sorry, Chair. One, one quick thought. In, in terms of the presentation, I think the work, or what would be helpful to see is more of an understanding of how the system works today. Like reading it in a paragraph is extremely difficult to understand. So a presentation on like, here's maybe some different classifications or here's how people are paid and people are maybe misclassified. The under, the understanding of how the whole thing works and why this is needed would, you know, would be better. Or would be helpful, I think, for people to understand. So thank you for hearing me.
That's great. So generally we're feeling we're on generally the right track with this? Okay. Is that what you needed from us?
I'm here to give a, you know, give the information and take any questions and incorporate that into our work.
All right. Well, I think that's what we have for you then.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is cannabis business standards with Planner Hesbeck.
Hello. Let me share my screen really quick. Okay. So I'm here to talk about cannabis. And Matt Brilhart from the city clerk's office is here as well to answer questions about licensing as they come up. So as you may know, recreational cannabis use was legalized in August 2023 in Minnesota. And so with that, the state gives local governing, governing authorities the right to regulate a few different things. So we can regulate buffer requirements and distances, number of registration limitations and general zoning and performance standards. We can't prohibit cannabis businesses overall, but we can limit the number of registrations. So here are the guiding questions that I kind of want you all to think about while I'm going through this presentation. I'll just quickly go through them and then we'll touch on each topic in the slides. But the first one is sensitive uses, kind of thinking about which sensitive uses should cannabis businesses have a minimum separation from? Going along with that is buffers. What distances should the city require for sensitive land use buffers? And then zoning use types. Staff proposed the addition of three new cannabis related zoning use types. So do you agree with those? Zoning districts. Do you agree with the proposed list of zoning districts where various types of cannabis businesses are permitted or conditional or not allowed? Performance standards. What performance standards do you think should be considered for cannabis businesses? And then license limits, whether the city should limit the total number of cannabis businesses within the city through licensing restrictions? So I sent out this map via email. So hopefully you all had some time to kind of look at it. But basically the state says we can treat schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities and attractions within a public park that are regularly used by minors as sensitive uses. So this is map, this map is showing all of those sensitive uses. Additionally, with different buffered distances around you them, or surrounding them, that's why this map is kind of busy. So the buffered distances that the state allows us to have is 1,000 feet for schools, the maximum. And for daycares, residential treatment facilities and attractions within a public park used by minors is 500 feet. On the right, you can see the existing buffers that we have for different license types throughout the city currently. So staff is proposing using the same buffers from schools as liquor licenses require, which would be 300 feet in order to stay consistent with those buffer requirements. And we did want to note that in the fall, the city clerk had gone before council and had a discussion about this and council, council had kind of mentioned that they were interested in changing the hemp buffer to 300 feet as well to be consistent. This map is just showing the schools in Bloomington because we are suggesting only treating schools as a sensitive use. And the circles around it are the 300, 500 and 1,000 feet buffers. I pulled out a specific example, the Nativity of Mary School, which is kind of off 98th Street. I just wanted to show the 300, 500 and 1,000 foot buffers and what those would potentially be excluding for before there could be retail in there. So that's kind of a visual to help. And for zoning use types, I wanted to first note that we are not treating medical and regular cannabis uses differently. We are proposing to treat them the same. So with the new license types that the state is allowing, we were able to categorize some of those into existing uses. So that's the four on the left side. And then we do, we are proposing three new uses in order to kind of encompass all the licenses from the state. And then the next slide is going to show the use tables. So we can talk about that more in depthly. So again, the left side shows the existing uses and where things like cannabis retail stores would be allowed and which districts cultivation for agriculture indoor, cannabis wholesaling, and then cannabis special events. And then on the right side are the new uses that we're proposing. They're all conditional uses. Cannabis testing facility, we consider to be similar to a research laboratory. So we made them allowed in all the same zoning districts, but we made them conditional uses for cannabis combination business. We took, we looked at where retail and manufacturing are both allowed in industrial districts. And it's only one district, the transitional industrial district. So we allowed them as a conditional use. And then manufacturing, we took the existing manufacturing use and made all the zoning districts where it's allowed this use as a conditional use. And then here is the table showing neighborhood and commercial zoning districts. None of the new use types would be permitted in these districts. So this is kind of just to show where cannabis retail would be allowed and cannabis special events. Okay. For performance use standards, we are not exactly sure yet what the state is going to regulate. So this question might be jumping the gun a little bit. But we just kind of wanted to know if there were any considerations that you all had thought about that we could add to these as performance standards. Currently for the medical marijuana distribution centers, we have standards related to building location, lighting and security and exterior signage. And then the state statute mentions things like ventilation and filtration, wastewater, water usage, things like that. Lastly, we have the registration limitations. So the first bullet point is saying that we as a city could limit basically cannabis businesses that have retail to one per 12,500 residents. So that would be around seven for us right now. And then the second bullet point is saying that Bloomington doesn't have to register a cannabis business if the county already has one active registration per 12,500. So if Bloomington had three businesses and the rest of the county already had 98, then we wouldn't have to register another one that came into the county. And staff is recommending no registration limits because we believe with the zoning districts, which we are allowing them in and market forces, it will be okay without limitation. So that brings us back to the guiding questions. I am going to go through them one by one and kind of talk about what staff's recommendation is again. And then we can go back to the slides or if you have questions or comments, we can do it that way. So.
Where you start? Would the, does the commission want to have staff go through all six? Or would we like to do one in conversation, one in conversation, one in conversation? Like one by one as she goes through each one? Do you want to have conversation about each one as, can we do that way? Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. So the first question is from which uses should cannabis businesses have a minimum separation? This was what I talked about first. It could be schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities and the part of parks where children congregate. And staff is recommending only having schools as a sensitive use.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the argument against the residential treatment facilities?
Thank you, Chairperson, Commissioner Cookden. I think the argument is we, I believe only have two of them in the city and also that's not currently a buffer we use for liquor licenses. So we're trying to be similar to that.
Commissioner Albrecht.
My question is, why the, why the, well, I guess sensitive uses, sure. And I'm kind of going into question two as well. But why, so if we go to liquor, why is there a buffer? Because people have legs and can walk. So if they're gonna go to a liquor store, they might go to a liquor store. It doesn't necessarily have any indication on where they go to school necessarily. Is there a background on that? I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Chairperson, Commissioner Albrecht. I believe some of the reasoning is that for creating a larger buffer distance would like not make students walk past these types of businesses, like on their way to school or like drive past them. Like there's less exposure kind of if they're further away from schools. Kids aren't thinking about it as much.
Okay. I have a follow up question if I may. So if you go back to your example of the school.
Yes.
If someone is driving there, if you, if we're using the 300 foot buffer, it's similar to the liquor license. You could have a, something on the north side of 98th and someone would have to drive on 98th to go to school. I'm just, I'm just thinking like, I'm just curious about what the, the reasoning. I, I understand not being adjacent to, but I don't necessarily understand the limitations if people kind of do what they are going to do anyways.
Yeah. Chairperson, Commissioner Albrecht, I think that's a fair point. And I think that's kind of what we're here to listen to. Also, I'm not completely sure, I guess, what the conversations were when they're making the buffer for like liquor licenses. I'm not exactly sure what that reasoning was.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I think one of the things on, on this aerial view is it's looking at as the crow flies, not actually as people are observing, like, like you said, I look at West Bloomington freeway, that's within that 300 feet, but it's on the other side of sixth lane interstate. Obviously that's not adjacent or within the purview of the school. So I struggle as well as how do we measure? Is it as the scroll, as the crow flies? What can we see? I struggle with it, but you have to draw a line somewhere if we do. And I like the consistency of the buffer between liquor. buffer between liquor and cannabis, at least consistency, either all or none, right? And so, thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. Personally, from my perspective, my expectation of a buffer would be to keep people who might not be right of mind away from certain areas who just went in and bought something and want to keep them away from children or parks or whatever. So personally, I, I think a five hundred foot buffer makes sense, whatever the, I think that's the THC one today. But that's my thought on it.
And if I could, I do want to clarify that the, the current buffer around liquor is just for off sale liquor, so liquor stores. We do not have any buffers around bars, restaurants.
Ready for the next question?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Planning Manager Mark.
Yeah, Chair Roman, it would be helpful to have maybe a straw poll or some sort of.
On each one.
On each one, yeah.
So, yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I, it was my fault. We went to buffers because I was talking about buffers. But in terms of sensitive uses, I agree with the staff recommendation about schools, if we are gonna have a minimum separation and that's what we use for liquor licenses, I think keeping it consistent and those sensitive uses consistence.
General consensus on that, Commissioner Cookden?
No, Mr. Chair, I, I find it prudent to include residential treatment facilities. I think if you can give someone who's in need of help even a few more seconds to reconsider their decision to make a mistake, I would be supportive of that.
I, I agree with you and I think that we may want to consider then doing the same for alcohol and THC hemp. Yes, Commissioner Albrecht.
Yeah, I, I would agree that if we're gonna do something for one, we should do it for the, the other.
Okay. Good. All right, and then so are we, have we bled into buffers or?
Yeah, a, a little bit, which is okay.
Three hundred, five hundred? I, I yeah, and the, I don't know how effective, I shouldn't say effective, it's a little, it's a Commissioner Albrecht was talking about, I don't know how effective a buffer is versus it's a moral symbolism, which I guess many of the things we have in front of our, in our, in our ordinances are moral symbolism, so. Three hundred versus five hundred, I don't know.
Can we see the map again, please?
Yes. The map with just the school or the whole map?
Uh, that one.
This one?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, question, so the, uh, just clarifying, would it be anything? So for example, that B four, like long skinny parcel, would it be that whole parcel? Or would the northern part of that parcel, like if we did three hundred feet with the northern part of that, would you be able to put a business on the northern parcel because it touched the buffer, it would be?
You must be able to because today there is liquor in that property.
Uh, Chairperson, Commissioner, members of the Commission, since we do not currently have the cannabis regulations on our books, the, the nice thing is we get to decide whether we're measuring strictly property line to property line, basically being the strictest interpretation of that. Or whe, whether we're measuring from the property line of the sensitive use from the, from the school to the actual retail space within a larger shopping center. We do, we actually, in our ordinance regarding the, regarding liquor stores and regarding the currently available, the hemp based products that are out there today. So liquor stores have the three hundred foot buffer now, the hemp products, hemp product retailer has the five hundred foot buffer, which as Emily mentioned, we had previously presented to the City Council and they were interested in making those consistent at three hundred feet. Because liquor stores, as you might know, now sell the hemp based products, as do tobacco stores. It, it created some inconsistencies there where we have, it doesn't seem fair that some of our liquor stores in town are allowed to sell these, the hemp based products that are currently available. Some liquor stores are, you can't. That didn't seem like a level playing field. So there, there are currently two different ways of measuring in the code. We could apply either one to this, whether we're measuring just a strict property line to property line or whether we're measuring from the property line of the sensitive use to the actual premises, the licensed premises.
Which one do we apply for liquor today?
It actually, that's a good question and we found that there, it depends whether or not it's in a, what's defined as a shopping center. If you are in a shopping center, you are able to measure just to the licensed premises, just to the liquor store's footprint. For lesser or standalone retail, the current definition in code would actually require measuring property line to property line. And when, when the, when the hemp THC licenses were added into the fold at five hundred feet, that provision wasn't included. And believe it or not, that's now causing issues too, because we apply the one measurement to the liquor store, we didn't write it that way for the hemp.
Yeah, I guess my hunch, hunch, my instinct is, is if we give a shopping center that ability and beyond the, not necessarily to the property line, and this, this is a good example, right? This property here where Festival Foods and the strip mall is, there is a liquor store in there. It's three or four, you know, units in from the school. And I think if, if we give that kind of grace to flexibility to a shopping center, you know, let's say this, the property to the north of the school there, if you're in the three hundred, the B four property, which is, you know, on the south side of the property, it's too close, but on the north side, it's not, well, and there's only one building. Let them build it to the north. That's my instinct is we should be consistent regardless of what type of property it is.
Agreed.
And the other one, I, you, you mentioned moving the THC and hemp to three hundred, which I don't have a problem with. But you didn't mention medical facilities, moving that from a thousand. Is there a reason?
So Chairperson Roman, so the medical distribution facilities will be incorporated into the changes we're making right now for cannabis.
It will also move to three hundred?
Yeah, that will kind of go away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Commissioner Curry.
Sorry, are we doing a poll right now or are we?
We can, if we, yeah, sure. Three hundred?
I was gonna say five hundred. Personally, I don't know, like, having all of them in the same store, I don't know if I've ever seen stores that have both in any state, so. I think the, keep, keep it at the five hundred personally.
Okay. All right.
Okay, um, so the next question is about the three new cannabis related zoning use types that we added. I can go back to this page. Just making sure that you all agree and are okay with those new uses that we're adding.
I don't have it. Commissioner Goldsman?
Can you, can you explain what the combination business is again?
Yeah, so the state licenses, there's three licenses that are called like cannabis micro business, mezzo business, and then there's a medical combination business. So that basically means that they can do multiple things there. They don't have to just stick to retail or just stick to, I think you can do growing there. So basically, it's a combination of a lot of things. I also have a table of all the license types. I just didn't think that was super productive to go through. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I get it now. Yeah.
Any feedback or concerns on the new uses? Okay.
Cool. Okay, um, so then with the new uses, do you agree with the proposed list of zoning districts where all of the types of cannabis businesses would be permitted or conditional uses? And I'll go back to the use table so you can kind of look at those. I'm gonna stay on this screen for a while. Cause I think the next screen provides less context.
Commissioner Curry.
Quick question. Today, there, there is a new district specifically for cannabis, did I hear that? Cause I couldn't find that in the, no?
Chairperson, Commissioner Curry, there's not a new district, there's just new uses. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then this matrix tells us which districts those uses may exist.
Yes.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Does staff have a map of these locations in relationship to the buffer that we just talked about?
Chairperson, Commissioner Goldsman, um, not really. We have and the interactive GIS map, I think, is only right now showing where retail could be. It's not showing all of these districts and where things may specifically be.
If I may, does staff have any concerns about, I mean, this looks pretty open, but I just want to make sure our staff's interpretation that there are variety of locations that this could be located in that makes sense? I just don't want us to go down the rabbit hole of like prohibiting it without saying we're prohibiting it. It's the other, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, Chairperson, Commissioner Goldsman. I think staff is comfortable with this because our reasoning behind at least the new uses were to keep them similar to kind of existing uses. Except for to make them a conditional use so that you all could have approval and see them first. So yeah, this is staff's recommendation, which we're comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hespeck, what is Mall of America zoned?
That's a good question. Glenn.
Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookden, Mall of America's on CX two.
CX two, is that the only CX two property?
Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookden, it's the Mall of America, the land to the north, which includes IKEA. The land to the north of that, which is vacant now, former.
Sorry, um, let me restate that. I didn't have my microphone on. For the record, CX two includes the Mall of America itself, the land to the north, which includes IKEA. The land to the north of that, which is the former Thunderbird Hotel, now vacant. And then the land directly to the east of the Mall of America, we call it the adjoining land site, which is currently vacant. So kind of those four sites.
Thank you. Ms. Hespeck, have we reached out to the mall about this?
Uh, Chairperson, Commissioner Cookden, I have not and I'm not aware that people on my team have. Yeah.
I think, Mr., uh, Mr. Mark, it looks like he had.
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookden, one thing to note on that, it would not obligate the mall to, to do anything. It would just open the door to some of these uses. They could still, as a property owner, have their own approach to it.
Sure, so they're a private enterprise and they could just restrict that use on their own.
They could, okay. Thank you.
Any other feedback on the use table? Or generally comfortable with it? Yes? Maybe? Mostly?
My, I, I do think the Mall of America is an interesting test case, like do we as a city have any thoughts about whether that's a place we want to see this or not? That's obviously, uh, it's what we're known for and let's say the mall does want this, is the city okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's, this is a corner of the industry that is rapidly changing. But I would have to venture, I guess, that absent significant change, that could be a draw for certain tourists. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. What is, what is the law on consuming cannabis in public and, you know, I don't know, being under the influence or whatever you refer to it as?
Chairperson, Commissioner Curry, I'm not sure. I would assume it's similar to alcohol. But I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioner Curry, that, that definitely is under discussion, probably separate from this ordinance, but I mean, there's been some discussion of treating it identical to tobacco. And tobacco is not allowed in certain areas and is allowed in others. So that's at least one discussion point, but it hasn't been determined.
Okay, yeah, I just wonder, I'm thinking like, well, you go to the mall and you know, buy some gummies and pop a few gummies and you got people wandering around the mall all day. I've, I don't know if that even matters. I mean, it happens, I'm sure in other states as well and.
Other state people could go to a restaurant in the mall, have a couple cocktails and wander around the mall all day too.
Right, yeah, I don't know. I'm, I don't know if these are even things I should be thinking about.
No, it's a good question.
Chairperson, members, so I do want to again, uh, point out that the hemp based products, which may not be as intoxicating as the full strength that's coming, are currently available at the mall, both in the form that you would purchase and there's a couple stores where you'd purchase something and take it with you. And then there are also a number of restaurants at the mall that are now selling THC or hemp based THC seltzers. So that is the hemp based or lower potency form is available today at the mall. So that this change would represent, you know, if the mall were interested in leasing to a sort of a full blown dispensary.
I guess I'm sure the mall can figure out what they want to do. They can take care of themselves.
Commissioner Cookden.
A final piece of commentary, I think a little bit about the strip in Vegas where that's now legal. And I've heard just anecdotally from a few different people that I loved going to Vegas, but it was so annoying walking by people smoking weed the whole time. Cause it, I think the difference between like gummies or a seltzer is it doesn't really affect anybody else, but like smoking cannabis is for some annoying. And so being that that's our largest draw for guests in our city, I'm not sure how I personally feel about it, but I think it's worth a little more thought and conversation.
And especially when you get into the, the question about, and it sounds like it's outside of the scope, but again, the question of where can you smoke it? Versus.
Yeah, and I think one thing that's different, obviously the mall is mostly indoors, so that is a big difference, but I, I think it's an interesting thing to think about.
Chairperson, Mr., or Commissioners, the, the law, the, the statute is very clear that the Minnesota Indoor Clean Air Act fully applies in, in all places.
There is that, but then there's also individual city ordinances where we talk about, you know, there's no smoking within twenty-five feet of the door or all those types of things. And so, though I think it'll have to be amended probably over time, if not sooner. So. Other thoughts on this matrix? Generally okay with it? Commissioner Cookden?
Uh, one more question. So when we say it's a conditional use, so that would have to them come before the planning commission and city council about that particular application, there could be conditions placed upon it? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So I think that's another level thing that gives me some comfort about the mall site is that's a conditional, proposed as conditional, not permitted.
Uh, only for agricultural or testing or manufacturer.
Oh, sorry, this.
They would be permitted for retail.
Perhaps.
At entertainment.
Perhaps that could be, can, we may wish to consider that as conditional.
Commissioner Curry.
Sorry, one more question. Clarification on entertainment and recreation special events, is that a business that administers that? Or is that like, let's all get together and smoke a bunch of weed? Like, I don't, what?
Chairperson, Commissioner Curry, so entertainment and recreation special events. I believe that requires an additional license anyways, like you have to have a license to have a special event. And I also think for the cannabis special events, they can only be up to four days. Yeah, does that answer the question?
Well, but I guess is what I'm wondering is, is the, the use type, I guess, is it, it is actually like for an event focused on weed? Is that what you're saying? Or is it a business that runs events that don't necessarily happen there?
Maybe the planning manager may have some insight?
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioner Curry, so there is a state use license type that relates to special events. And so there's the question, how does that state license interrelate with our city use list and, and types? As I understand it, the state license would be required if you were to offer and. uh, offer any cannabis related products at a special event. It wouldn't necessarily need to be a special event focused on, on cannabis, but because cannabis would be offered, they would need that state license. So then the question is, if there's such an event that gets a state license, where does it fall in our city code? We thought, well, we have this existing category for special events. It would most appropriately fall within that.
Interesting. So it doesn't really follow retail sales then? Like my, even though it's, it's similar to retail sales and that we're selling it or providing it to people in that area?
Yeah, Chair Roman, uh, Commissioner Curry, I wonder if we have the definition from the state license type of, I know there's a time limit involved on the.
Yeah, I think it's four days. Um, I think the difference is, is that it's a limited time. Where a retailer, like you could go to the store from eight to 10 p.m., but a special event, um,
like a Girl Scout stand or something?
Yeah. So no longer than four days.
Really, you know.
Another successful.
Summer Fete or, you know, Heritage Days, for example, it's kind of a.
Okay, Clara, thank you. That makes more sense.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Nope.
All right. Maybe the last call on the matrix? Yep. Okay. We heard some consideration to think about them all.
Thank you. Um, okay. So the next question is about performance standards. So again, on that, we're not exactly sure what the state is going to require, um, but just any considerations that you all thought of, um, when we were going through this or anything that you might want us to think about.
Standards do we have on alcohol or THC? If any.
Um, chairperson, I think it's more related to like if there's a patio that has alcohol. Like I think there are certain standards related to that. Um, but in the zoning code, I don't think we have performance standards related to just like alcohol in general.
Okay. Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hespeck, so this is the item about like exterior signage limitations and stuff, right?
Yes.
Uh, jumping, Mr. Chair, I, I'm in favor of continuing forward with what we're using for other, I think THC businesses with the limited signage and stuff. I know some of our neighboring cities don't have that and they can be a bit garish. And I could see if you're going into a strip center or something and let's just say you're a bakery and the cannabis shop moves in next door and it's totally outrageous, that could detract from your business. And so I think to keep happy commercial neighbors, I, I am in favor of some limited signage.
Chairperson, Commissioner Cookton, sorry. And I should have mentioned this before, but signage is actually something that the state has spoken on already. Um, so we do kind of, we have to abide by that. And I know the city clerk kind of knew the specifics surrounding that. Um, so I will trust her with what she says.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I think we should just be consistent with this business as we have with other businesses. So lighting, you know, uh, the signage, um, screening, um, any other type of performance standards that we have for any other type of business should be the same as this. I don't feel like we should treat them any differently. Because they're new.
Yeah. Or if it's manufacturing, it follows manufacturing. If it's retail, it follows retail. If it's XYZ. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Do, uh, performance standards include inside the space and any security measures inside the space? Or is it just exterior?
Um, chairperson, Commissioner Curry, I do think in the current medical marijuana distribution facility standards, um, we do have standards related to like how money is kept, um, and like security, um, related to that.
And that's in part because, um, previously when marijuana was a schedule one drug, uh, those businesses could not handle money through the banking system. Um, but I think now that that's been recast as a schedule three drug, it, it should remove, I'm not a, I'm not a tax expert. But I believe that that's part of what the federal government re categorizing marijuana as a cannabis, I guess, as a schedule three drug removes that restriction from the ability to bank, which is what some of that performance standard around how you store the money, because it was essentially a cash kind of business that they only could operate in cash. It was an unbanked kind of a business.
Well, and so the stores that I've been in, in other states, you know, I think there's some other security measures to keep things secure, um, to keep their products secure.
Product end because they had to keep the cash there too.
Okay. So I just think in terms of, and going back to the conversation about liquor stores and selling them in the same place, I think that naturally creates a separation and that people want that security in the store and don't end up putting that into a liquor store. So, um, I just don't know if that's something that we need to discuss or not.
It's a good question.
Yeah. Chairperson, Commissioner Curry, I do think that is mentioned in the state statutes and I kind of imagine they're gonna have kind of a blanket or requirements of security for the products and what that looks like. You know, especially when it comes to like IDing and making sure people are of the correct age. I do think they'll. And that, and that the last question is about license limits. So should the city limit the total number of businesses? The first way was basically limiting retailers. And that could be one per 12,500 residents. And the other way that we could do it is through kind of the county and the number of overall businesses, not just retailers that there are in the county.
Do we, are we allowed to? So I, I, I understand we're not allowed to say no unless the county has enough. Are we allowed to say no, you can't sell certain types of this product? And the reason I ask that is as a city, we have made a decision that we are not going to issue new tobacco licenses. It doesn't mean that you don't have other forms of nicotine. You just don't have the smoked version because that was determined counter to certain health goals for the city. So my question is, is in our registration limitation, can we say, you know, you can have these, but you can't sell the smoked product, for example?
Chairperson, that is a good question. I'm unsure. Um, Matt, I don't know if you know.
No, uh, Commissioners, no, I'm also unaware of that. Um, but I'm just, I suspect with the amount of press that this issue in general has been getting over the last two years, particularly with regards to, um, limiting local control to kind of.
Yep.
You know, manner and place, uh, the number of license restrictions. I think I, I have a strong feeling we would have heard something about that if that was part of the local control in terms of could we get into what product types can be sold. My, my instinct is no, we don't have control over that.
Okay.
Chair Roman, um, Assistant City Attorney, uh, Kevin Toski is in the uh, Webex, but he did warn me that he may be inaccessible for a few minutes. And so we can check in, uh, Mr. Toski, if you have anything. And if we don't hear from you, we'll assume that you're otherwise occupied.
And that's okay. I just, again, I just raised the question because somewhere along the line, the city has said smoking things is counter to our health goals. And so, but we've said other forms of, of that intoxicant are acceptable. And so I'm just raising the question about whether, as we think about registration, whether or not the city wants to think about forms of it.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi there. So hi, hi Chair, hi Commissioners. Sorry, I'm at, um, I had to take my son somewhere and I'm it's kind of a loud place, so I had to step out for a second, but um, I want to say I'm almost sure there's a statute similar to alcohol where you have authorized products you can sell and they're limited or they're actually enumerated by statute. So like an off sale liquor store is authorized by law to sell certain things and the city can't step in and say, um, you can't sell a certain kind of beer, whiskey, that type of thing. It's, I, I'm almost certain there is a similar provision in the cannabis law. I'm not in front of my computer, so I can't look it up, but um, maybe the similar effect, right? You're authorized to sell, um, bulk, bulk flower cannabis, um, vaping accessories, things like that. And I don't think we can step in and pick and choose off the menu what they can and can't sell.
Sure. And I, and that may well be the case. I just raised the question for the staff to think about, uh, and how that may or may overlap our other policies. Cause it go, it gets to the question of registration limits, right? And so if, if we've said that tobacco, we're not going to let anymore, then that may influence how I feel about registration limits on something else you can smoke versus if we don't have a registration limit on, you know, nicotine products, I might feel differently about not having a registration limit on cannabis derived products. That's just, I'm just, I'm wandering.
And, um, Mr. Chair members, this may clear it up. So this is the first sentence of the local control chapter of the statute. Uh, a local, a local unit of government may not prohibit the possession, transportation, or use of cannabis flower, cannabis products, lower potency hemp edibles, or hemp derived consumer products authorized under this chapter.
But that doesn't talk about sale.
Doesn't talk about sale.
Okay.
And then the next provision, um, so that, except as provided in certain ways, the local unit of government may not prohibit the establishment or operation of a cannabis business, uh, licensed under this chapter.
Okay. Other thoughts on registration limitation? Seven, something larger than seven, unlimited. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I am not in support of having a limit. I think market can determine what is viable for a business. So I, at this time, would not support having a limit. We don't have a limit on liquor licenses. Um, so from a consistency perspective, that's my stance.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think, um, to Commissioner Goldsman, the market is going to dictate this. And if you limit the number of them, then the, the small number are going to get very large. And now we've got weed superstores, which I'm not sure is what I'm looking for. I'd rather have a bunch of small ones than a very large one. So uh, I'm not in favor of a registration limit.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I am in favor of a registration or a limit. I think, I mean, seven seems like a lot to me. If I've gone to, you know, going to Denver, Palm Springs or other, you know, California, Colorado. I mean, seven seems like, like if we had 10 or 15 in Bloomington, that seems like a lot of stores. So uh, my perception is if we had a lot of stores, some of the stores might not uh, be willing to invest as much or would, you know, there'd be more competition, which might make some stores not maybe follow the right path. And I'd rather have fewer stores that are more likely to be successful. And then, you know, uh, have the right security, have the right, whatever it is, whatever else it is they need to do and ensure that they are successful.
Do we have a best guess as to how many liquor stores we have in Bloomington?
Commissioners, I have the exact number because I knew that question was coming.
It's best guess.
And we're in the midst of liquor license renewal season, um, so I have to know that number. Yeah, yeah. Yes, place your bets. Um, we have, uh, 19 off sale liquor licenses. So those are full liquor stores. And then we have an 11 additional, um, three, two, uh, liquor, uh, I guess liquor or liquor licenses. So those are your gas stations and grocery stores that can only sell three, two beer.
And I recognize, sorry, I interrupted you. Yeah. And I recognize that we have a more freeze and no new tobacco license. Do we also have a number on tobacco licenses?
That number I don't have in front of me.
No hunch?
I don't have a hunch on that one. Um, the, the other thing I'll add is that, uh, on the hemp based businesses that are currently out there, a- as you may have observed, just about any business type is allowed to sell the, the currently available hemp based, uh, edibles and, and seltzers and, and things of that nature. They're sold at gift stores, corner stores, grocery stores, bars and restaurants, both to consume onsite and to, to take. So that, the, the, um, you know, the floodgates are open on that product and the legislature has not done anything to, to dial that back or to give cities the authority to dial that back.
That's where I think it's going to be a little bit of an interesting conversation. But and again, I don't have a strong opinion on the subject, but I think although we've talked about, you know, having this, this buffer zone from, uh, consistent with alcohol, this is ultimately going to become more like when you could buy cigarettes at the grocery store. Or, you know, back to when I was young, um, you know, and they weren't even behind the counter kind of a thing. And so I think that there's one thing to say, you know, if you're, it's to have a limit of seven, like on a freestanding store, like, right? Like Bob's Buds or something. Um, it's another thing to the, you know, how much this is going to be in, you know, every single business in the, the strip center over there, for example, because it's, this guy is going to sell gummies and that gal is going to have flour and the place next door is going to have seltzer. I mean, and so it's, I don't, if you're going to have a restriction specifically, you almost have, it's about just that that's all the business does. But the business is going to be infused into so many other things. I don't know how you get your head around that.
And, and Chair Commissioners, I do want to clarify so that these limits that we're talking about here, um, would only, the, these are, these would not encompass the hemp based businesses. If we, if we set a limit of seven, that would strictly be talking about the full blown dispensaries that are, that are coming.
Like a, like a freestanding liquor store.
Like a freestanding liquor store or like the dispensaries that are now common in.
But again, unlike a liquor store where in Minnesota, it's very tightly regulated and you only can sell it in a store, you know, you don't also get liquor, real liquor in a grocery store like you do in most other states. You don't also get liquor in a gas station like you do in most other states. And so, um, it's a little bit different in that it's not quite apples to apples for me on that.
I was, I had the same, thank you, Chair. I had the same thought about the grocery store. I mean, yeah, cause you can't sell liquor in a grocery store, but then you're going to be able to sell weed in a grocery store? I mean, I don't know if that, how much sense that makes. Personally, again, from the experience I've had in other states, I think these specialized stores have a much better experience versus if I'm walking into a gas station and have a very weird, like around the law type product that you don't quite know what it is. And somebody's selling that all day, like, I don't know, just something that's more predictable and a, uh, professional setup, I think is a, a better scenario. That's just my personal thought.
Other thoughts on registration limitation? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in, uh, favor of the no registration limits, um, as well. Um, so to clarify, the hemp derived THC products, there would be no change in that. This is just cannabis. So that, so we wouldn't, we would not see the flower, for example, in a gas station.
I believe that's correct. Um, that the, the products that are coming, the, the pro, the full legalization of marijuana, um, full strength would likely, i- is very likely to be in exclusive retail locations because of kind of their unique security and cash handling and other needs. Um, the, the hemp based products, which can be in any form, um, from a beverage to, um, vaporized to edibles. We're not proposing any changes to that other than to make the five, the 500, that's the 500 foot buffer that's on the books now to take that down to 300, um, as was previously presented to the city council last fall.
Okay. Yeah, uh, thanks. I'm, I am in favor of the staff recommendation here.
So, um, I heard one thought, uh, one recommendation on a limitation, and I heard generally otherwise, no limit.
Okay.
I'm going to take them into consideration.
Yeah.
All right. That, what else do you have for us?
Um, so those are all the questions that I have. Um, and then I just have this slide that is kind of the next steps. Um, so we're going to city council for a study session on June 3rd. And then we'll be back before you all for a public hearing on June 20th. And city council public hearing on July 1st. That's what I have.
Anything else for staff before they wrap this one? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
All right. Item three is another study item on streamlined development approvals and Senior Planner Johnson has this item for us. And Senior Planner Johnson has this item for us.
You have me, Chair. I didn't expect that to wrap up, so it's probably better.
Maybe you were gathering a pile of all the materials we had on this subject.
Okay, good to see you all this evening. I'll get my presentation queued up here. But the topic on tonight's study session has to do with streamlining and increasing administrative development approvals. So this is a project on the 2024, excuse me, planning commission work plan. I'll share my screen here. Thanks for your patience. Yeah, so here's just a quick agenda slide as to what we plan to talk about this evening. So the goal of the presentation here is to kind of present a fairly large amount of information to you that was in the packet. Try and give it to you in broad strokes and, and detail. And what we're thinking is that maybe discussion and direction can be provided through some facilitation at the end of the presentation, if that's okay. So what we're going to go over is kind of the background as to what's brought us here before and why this project was added to the work plan. What are the goals of the project? Why do it? And then go over the actual 11 projects that we're going to be presenting to you. I know there was 10 in the staff report. I'll give you a quick update on new project number 11. And then discuss some next steps and then solicit your feedback for where to take this project. So a little bit of background, as I mentioned, this is a project on the annual work plan. So the last time that the city did a more significant update that is kind of a through line or connected to this project was back in 2009. And so there was a number of different procedural updates that were done to the zoning code at that time to establish who the approval authority was on various application types. That's when the administrative or planning manager approval was first established for certain types of final site and building plans or the site plan review, as we refer in the staff report. And so that's the, the last most significant effort. Since that time, there's been incremental or little things that have been tweaked along the way. But we haven't done a more significant look at this in 15 years. Just in terms of what's been happening in that time, in kind of 21st century regulatory environment, more cities are looking at ways to streamline things in order to create a more dynamic economic environment, but also try and encourage the production of housing supply and other types of development that cities are sorely lacking right now. So there's some famous ones nationally, the Green Tape Program in Silver Springs, Maryland, got a lot of attention at that time. Just most recently at the National APA Planning Conference, there's a presentation from the Boise Idaho staff. Maybe some of you attended that. And more, more locally here, certainly some cities have overhauled their zoning codes. And that's certainly one approach that some cities take is they just do a full overhaul, either through a consultant or some type of more significant effort. But Rochester just went through this process. They've adopted what's called the Unified Development Code, UDC. And that has transitioned almost all of their approvals, absent unless, of course, if there's need for variances or rezonings to a full administrative process. And more locally here, Hopkins is another example. There are other cities that have more administrative approvals. Of course, there's always nuances within their code. As you know, Bloomington's code, there's always some nuance to be had. So that just provides some of kind of the, the national and local context. But just a note that staff did scour the comprehensive plan as well as our strategic plan. And we found multiple goals and strategies that in our view are very supportive of this broader effort. So why streamline? So simply speaking, the goal of, of these efforts is basically to lower barriers and cost for development approval. So there's a lot of value and benefit in kind of the, the current regime or the current structure that a lot of cities take. They really value public input and it gives people an opportunity for information and to get their questions answered. That's certainly a positive thing, but it's not having a more full conversation without kind of recognizing some of the costs and some of the challenges and difficulties, particularly for parties seeking development approval, but even just for cities themselves in terms of what, what can be accomplished and the timelines associated with those things. So as part of this project, we established kind of four criteria or evaluation metrics that we wanted to see as part of the sub projects that we studied. But basically, you know, what are the ways to, or what are the benefits or ways to streamline development? A, it's to reduce the time necessary to gain approval, reduce the financial cost of going through the process, increasing the procedural simplicity, particularly with new entrepreneurs or people starting businesses. It can be a very overwhelming process for them when they get into regulatory environments. And then also just increasing the certainty or the confidence of approval. We've shown you the pyramid of land use discretion 1 million times, so I don't want to go through that exercise again. But even on some applications that, just from a land use law perspective, are probably less discretionary, the way that they're perceived by the public, if they still have to go through a public hearing process and, and do that, it can be somewhat intimidating and drive some uncertainty. So those are kind of the four metrics that we look at, that we evaluated our sub projects on in terms of how they move the needle in those ways. You know, why, why approach or why to pursue streamlining development? Certainly it's to encourage more economic activity, to have a healthy local business sector, and also to increase housing production. Both of those things can benefit from streamlining development. Streamlining supports equity. As I mentioned, when the more complex the regulatory environment to gain approval of a project, that really favors the more resourced and more experienced people within that arena. And so if you're getting new entrants, having more complex regulatory environment is pretty difficult. Integrity and effectiveness of internal review must be maintained. So this is just a point to state that for a lot of these cities that are pursuing these kind of methods or this approach of reviewing development, it doesn't mean that they shortchange or don't do all the same internal steps that they would always do in terms of reviewing all the plans, all of the different departments and divisions that review application prior to presenting it to you here at a planning commissioner or city council meeting. Those things all still do occur regardless of not taking that next step. So it's just important to note that. So as I mentioned, the staff report initially noted 10 sub projects. We've recently had something come to our attention that we think is a good fit for this project. And I'll talk about that one in a little more detail. It's, I think it's fairly straightforward. But given the fact that you didn't have any time to prep for that one, we will describe that in a little bit better detail to get your feedback on it. But yeah, we looked at 10 sub projects. And as I mentioned, we kind of, how we selected the 10 sub projects is that we wanted things that would move the needle on the four evaluation criteria that I described. They all have kind of varying levels of potential impact. That's not to say that they shouldn't be pursued if they are lower impact. One thing I would add, yeah, just that this presentation is going to focus more time and kind of oxygen on the, the things that we think have larger impact or are more significant. So projects one and two, just to note, we are skipping the DRC review sub project, which was project one. All development review committee is, is basically the internal staff working group of how we review development before it goes to a building permit or before it goes before you in a formal development application. And so there's just some minor code tweaks that we're recommending that make it more explicit that if it's a use as a permitted use and just does proceed to a building permit application or does not require a site plan approval, that we can still use that tool. So just a note about that. So I did not add a slide about that one. But the first kind of more significant sub projects is project number two and three. So what this has to do with is that depending on the city that you're operating in, even if you are a permitted use and you're submitting for a new building, a new development, what you will need to do is gain site plan approval. And in Bloomington, that's called final site and building plans. What we're talking about is projects that don't have any variances, conditional use permits or rezonings associated with them. Oftentimes, you know, the, the projects you're looking at tend to do bundle a few things put together, but not always. We do have projects that are just simply final site and building plans. So just a note, again, just to reiterate, no matter what direction you go, even if it's paired with one of these other application types like rezoning or variance, it's still automatically, once it's bundled together, triggers that more extensive review. It has to follow the kind of most significant review path. One aspect of, you know, there's both value and cost in this, but requiring site plan review does have a public hearing. I spoke about both kind of the pluses and minuses of that. It does help keep residents informed and engaged of the process. On the other hand, on code complying projects where the planning commission and city council has somewhat less discretion if a project is code compliant, sometimes it can set up kind of that false, you know, dynamic where the testimony can try and get significant changes to the project or the project not go forward as all and the city is not on sound ground in some of those instances. So just one thing to be cognizant of. We did put together both for this one and the conditional use permit sub project, just kind of a general idea of what administrative approval looks like versus a planning commission action or a city council action. So when we're talking about time and, you know, financial costs, some of these financial or some of these application fees may not seem that significant. But sometimes in addition to that, it might require the applicant to work with consultants to prepare more kind of sharper or more complete drawings than they might not otherwise need if it was an administrative process. Some, some developers hire consultants just to kind of be their face and their spokesperson at meetings like this. So that can sometimes be, be the case. But this gives you an idea in terms of some of the, the time savings and cost savings associated with some of these differences. So, you know, a two to three week process versus a seven to nine week process, that's pretty significant when you're talking about, you know, in terms of meeting the market, establishing a new business or whatever the case may be, getting into a new space often. So there's, there's really two options to consider for the city here unless, you know, unless it was just maintaining the status quo. But option one is that some cities allow fully, fully administrative site plan review. In fact, some cities actually do not have a formal site plan zoning approval process when it's a permitted use and the project is fully code compliant. So in the instances of some of those cities, even say, you know, a four story multifamily apartment building, they can literally just submit a building permit to the city. There's no public hearing as long as all of their plans meet all of the required content that they have to submit and they're demonstrating compliance with all the city code. Those projects can proceed to an administrative site plan approval, usually by a community development director, planning manager, and the like, or just straight to building permit. So this is one of the potential options. In our view, that cuts the review time basically in half. The downstroke of a fully administrative process is that you're going to have some projects that are on the smaller end of the scale and you're going to have some projects that are quite large and significant, you know, might have more traffic impacts or might have other things that residents are not anticipating. So right now, as I mentioned before, you know, it's essential that the accuracy and integrity of our review as a staff continues to be maintained at a high level. But there is those trade offs. So at this point, you know, the staff recommendation would be more in line with maintaining some level of public hearing process for larger projects. And I can kind of walk through that a little bit better on the next slide. But that being said, if the planning commission and city council wanted to, again, cut some of that red tape, staff is certainly willing and able to proceed in that direction. And we have the, we're confident in our abilities to do that. So option number two, related to this sub project of site plan approval, is kind of building off the work that was done in 2009. So currently the planning manager role, I mean, there's other staff people, according to city code, that have some administrative abilities to approve things like airport zoning permits or other things. But when we're talking about final site and building plans, it's really the planning manager. And so just kind of looking at some of the, exhibit one attached to the staff report provided you kind of a, some examples of recent projects that were approved as part of final site and building plans. Kind of looking through a lot of those recent examples, the, the numbers that we landed on that we were very confident, you know, in terms of expanding those administrative abilities, would be new buildings with a gross area of 10,000 square feet or less. Currently it's only 1,000. Building expansions up to 25% of existing floor. And then adding multi-unit, adding units to a multi-resident or a multi-unit residential project. What we sometimes see is that apartments will want to convert their club room or turn one large unit into two smaller units. Right now, just to do that simple change, they do need to come before the planning commission to gain approval of that because the planning manager does not have the authority to increase the number of dwelling units in multifamily settings. Yeah, so that, something to chew on there. We did, of course, do a peer review of our, you know, surrounding cities and the larger cities like we typically do. So a couple of things you'll see here, Burnsville and Egan, it's a straight to building permit situation. Blaine, Maple Grove, Lakeville do allow administrative site plan review. One thing I do want to caution with an analysis like this, though, is that it doesn't reflect the complexity of their zoning code. So you have some cities where maybe 80% of the projects go through, are able to be code compliant and go through final site and building plan, our version of that approval, without having to seek, you know, flexibility or go through a plan development process. You have some cities that, you know, a large proportion of their larger development applications are plan developments. So it might say up there, you know, we have an administrative site plan approval process. Well, if only 25 or, you know, 15% of your projects are able to go through that because they need flexibility, then, you know, I'm just cautioning on one piece of the data there. But anecdotally, or I mean, with this data, you know, five cities out of the 11 that we looked at. And then anecdotally, we know Coon Rapids allows some form of administrative site plan review. Roseville does as well. And again, that's large projects, so long as they're fully code compliant. Yeah, I think that's the key there. So we provided an exhibit in the staff report, giving you kind of a wide range. I can pull the exhibit up if it's helpful at some point later during Q and A. But suffice to say, you know, we get a lot of different development applications just from our range and scale. The top left, you know, that was a 6,000 square foot warehouse building done on 86th Street. Pretty straightforward review. The addition to the Schneiderman's Furniture Building, you know, 4,000 square feet, that would exceed the current allowance for planning manager approval. Donaldson, that's, you know, an example pretty close to here. And City Hall, you see it along 35W as an addition to their technology campus. That was a 14,000 square foot project. And then, you know, of course, hotels, self storage facilities, other things have gone through final site and building plans that are actually quite large. On a few occasions, multifamily as well. So it really can span the gamut. Just something to think about when you're thinking whether to expand the current allowances or go fully administrative. So this is kind of a nuanced one, but, and I'm not going to spend too much time on it. But currently, we do not require final site and building plans to build a new single family home. You simply have to submit a building permit as long as you're code complying. You know, the, the city planning staff obviously reviews it, other divisions and departments review it. Then we just issue the building permit. Currently, both accessory dwelling units and two family dwellings require final site and building plans for approval. In staff's judgment, we're very confident and comfortable that those use types can be treated the same as single family dwellings. They're very similar just from a review. They're not overly complex. So we would recommend of just removing that extra layer of zoning approval prior to them being able to submit for building permit approval. Yeah. So conditional uses review. Exhibit two is kind of a behemoth in the staff report. We, we spent a lot of staff hours reviewing all 112 uses in the Bloomington zoning code that are currently designated as conditional. But before I get into that, just a real quick summary, or you, you all have reviewed a lot of conditional use permits over the years. So I think you're fairly familiar with kind of their purpose and what value they add. But typically, cities have designated certain uses that are more, often cause kind of nuisance characteristics or have some locational concerns or just warrant greater discretion than other land uses typically as conditional uses. And so part of the value is having that site by site analysis. It would involve a public hearing. It involves that public information, of course, and allows to take testimony. And so that's kind of really the, the purpose behind it. But similar to the discussion about final site and building plans, that also comes with a cost. It takes time to, to go through that process and some applicants. It takes time to, to go through that process and some applicants, upon learning of conditional use permits, not many, but some just decide to look elsewhere, not pursue the project. So what are the strengths? Again, it does offer the city greater discretion. It's not a significant amount of discretion like a rezoning application. You're not allowed to make arbitrary and capricious decisions. It has to be tied to some, something incorrect with their, not in compliance of the city code or some major issue from a health, safety, welfare standpoint. But there is some greater discretion there than permitted uses, of course. The other strength and value again is the public notice process. I've been mentioning that. And then a correction of violation, this is, this does not come up very often. In fact, I don't, Glenn could correct me, but I, I don't think there's been any conditional use permit suspended or revoked in the time that I've been in Bloomington since 2015. So it's quite rare. But that being said, it can be utilized as a mechanism to seek faster correction if there are violations of some kind of the city code. What are the weaknesses and costs of CUPs? So again, as I mentioned, uncertainty of approval, it takes more time. As you can see, permitted uses, and this is where we're incorporating a building permit review, you know, permitted use two to three weeks, a conditional use approved by the planning commission, eight to 10 weeks. If it's one of the, the 22 uses that the city council has to weigh in on, then it's a 10 to 12 weeks. So you're talking about three months before they can start operating or start construction even depending on what the nature of the project is. Yeah, and there's a financial cost to that, you know, again, the, the fees aren't so significant, but sometimes what it, what, what you see on the, behind the curtain is usually more than what you're seeing in the application fees, if that makes sense. So yeah, I do want to point that out. Okay, so there's 112 uses in the Bloomington zoning code that are designated as conditional, as I mentioned. So staff evaluated all 112 of them. It took us, it took us far too long in the McLeod conference room, multiple meetings. But so, we had, wanted to set up criteria of how we're evaluating this. It can't just be like putting a finger in the air and being like, this one doesn't feel right, that one, yep, keep it the way it is. So what we did is we wanted to determine, A, if the particular use has use-based standards, so there's a section of the zoning code, self-storage facilities is an example of that, medical marijuana facilities, but maybe not in the future. In other words, there's a lot of uses that have use-specific standards. And the reason why those use-specific standards are really helpful is that they create operational and site requirements for those types of uses that really try and prohibit or preclude kind of the nuisance characteristics associated with conditional use permits. For example, data centers, self-storage facilities, those have buffer requirements to residential uses according to their use-based standards. Pet service facilities, another example of that. So in, in terms of evaluating whether a use can be or permitted or not, having use-based standards is a helpful indicator on whether or not we feel like we have good standards in place to, to address the use. The other thing is certainly what zoning districts it's allowed in. That's another thing that's critical to understand in terms of whether or not to make it permitted or not. Another criteria which slightly more subjective than the use standards criteria, but the potential for nuisance. So what are, you know, what are different forms of nuisance? Sound, dust, vibration, truck, truck traffic. I think there was a few more listed in the staff report, but basically those are the things that can create use conflicts. And so uses that have greater nuisance characteristics, obviously sometimes warrant greater scrutiny. The other thing I'd say is just, I think, you know, certainly the anecdotal experience of staff working on these different things probably plays a factor two into some of our recommendations, but between those three, that's kind of the major thing. The two other things I would say about staff's recommendations of what to do with all these conditional uses is that some of these uses, as was discussed in the last item, have licenses associated with them and some of those licenses have restrictions within them as well. And the last thing is that many of these uses have some form of limitation within the definition of the use itself. And so oftentimes, what we find is like a, a limited, a financial institution, limited for example, isn't allowed to have a drive-through ATM, and that's in the definition. It's not ideal, uh, planning and zoning practice to have standards within definitions, but that was just the historic practice for many cities for many years. So we do, do still have some of those remnants that exist. So sometimes it's also a function of how the use is defined in terms of how it's limited. Motor vehicle repair minor, for example, you can, you can't do bodywork with motor vehicle repair minor. So just to note that. And so, so what does all this mean? It means we put together a big matrix, it's exhibit two. Of the 112 conditional uses, we're recommending that 57 of them are, be made permitted on some level. That's almost 50% of, that's actually a little over 50% of the conditional uses be permitted on some level. The one thing that's really important to note about that though, and I know I've got on about this for a while, but there is very specific nuanced recommendations in the staff notes in some cases. So I'll give you one example of that. One is that we, currently it's a conditional use to have a tennis court at a single-family home. That use was created prior to the city adopting standards for sport courts. And so when I, when we suggest make it permitted on some level, in that particular case, what you'll find in the notes is that actually just deleting that use altogether because it already, tennis courts would already be subject to our sport court standards, for example setbacks. So, in other words, just if it's green, it doesn't just mean it's conditional now and it's all going permitted. In many cases also, there are either accessory or limited designations. And again, accessory means limited to 10% of a building floor area, limited means to 25%. So for several of the recommendations, in those cases, it suggests retaining that limited designation. And then the last thing I'll say about it is that we're not recommending any new uses get added to zones where they don't currently exist. This is evaluating the use matrix based on where all the uses are currently allowed now, either changing their designation from permitted to conditional. So it's kind of a big, a big task. I'm not going to go through all the 57 uses. I certainly can stand and take questions about individual ones if you have them. I have these slides to refer to where we list them. So the next three slides lists all of those 57 uses. I can come back to that. And then of course, I also have, I can get out of this presentation slide deck and go to the matrix itself. All of the uses in the matrix are identified by use number. So if you have questions about specific ones, it's helpful to probably identify it by the use number in the matrix, but we certainly can talk, chat about it just via the list and go through it as well. But, you know, reducing the amount of conditional uses in Bloomington by 50% would be a very significant lift in terms of project number six. So as I mentioned, the, the planning and some, this is going to be kind of a theme is like, one of the ways to streamline development is to greater empower the planning commission to have more approval authority. Because many of the applications you make recommendations on, oftentimes they end up on the consent agenda at city council. And the city council typically does not remove them from the consent agenda. So now, except for the rare case, you've now added, you know, two to three weeks depending on how the meetings line up for the approval to actually get effectuated. So one of the recommendations that staff has is that there's 22 conditional uses and two interim uses per the code right now that the city council has to approve. Otherwise, the planning commission has the authority to approve all the other ones subject to a three-business-day appeal process. Staff would recommend that all of the conditional uses be approved by the planning commission, subject to an approve, to an appeal process. Having an appeal process, and we'll talk, you know, this relates to all the next several items, is that it always gives for uses or developments that are under greater scrutiny or warrant, you know, additional consideration. The public, the applicant, the developer, whoever, the city council themselves in some cases, can choose to appeal the decision of the planning commission. And so that, that certain, that pathway would still be available. As a alternative, if the planning commission and council were not supportive of this recommendation, they could identify specific uses within the list that could be moved to the planning commission. I think there's several. So this is the list. These are the 22 uses that require city council approval right now. Again, I'm not going to go through the specifics of the list, but this is kind of the same way the conditional use matrix is set up. We look at whether there's use standards, what's, what are the potential for nuisance? What are some additional notes about, about these uses? Same thing for interim uses. Open storage is no longer allowed in Bloomington. So we're not sure why that one's still there, but you know, that, that happens. Remote airport parking, that one was recently before you. So staff is recommending that all of these application types have the ability to be acted upon by the planning commission, subject to appeal. That's our recommendation. So project number eight, similar theme, who has the authority to approve these applications? So under state law, city councils can act as the board of adjustment. They can designate the planning commission as the board of adjustment, or they can create a board of, a separate board of adjustment. In Bloomington, the city council acts as the board of adjustment, which means they're the body that approves variances. Staff would propose that the planning commission serve as the board of adjustment, similar to my comment about how a lot of applications end up on the consent agenda. That's most often the case with variance applications as well. You could establish an appeal process. So if the applicant or the public or the council did not agree with the decision made by the planning commission, they certainly would have the ability to appeal that decision. We did look at, again, our peer cities, most of them to have the city council serve as the board of adjustment. We did find two local examples in Edina and Eden Prairie that do have their planning commission serve as their board of adjustment. They do have longer appeal periods. I think Edina was 10 days and Eden Prairie maybe 15 days. The one comment I'll make about that is that when you have a 10 or 15-day appeal period, you're really not shortening the timeline or the process. So that is why if the city were to go in this direction, staff would recommend maintaining the three-day appeal period anecdotally. In kind of my experience dealing with development applications, if there's a party who is going to appeal a decision, they're typically ready to do so shortly thereafter the action is completed. That means they're pretty engaged in the process and it doesn't take a very detailed letter or form to put together to do so. So what other sub-projects are there? I talked about DRC review. Project seven was granting planning commission the authority to approve final development plans that have no flexibility associated with them. We've seen lots of FDPs have to go to city council even when they don't have any flexibility. In our perspective, that's no different than final site and building plans, a code-compliant project, so we'd recommend that change. These other ones are kind of nuanced to a degree, so PC approval of tent extensions. Right now, if you want a tent longer than a 25-day period and think like larger event tents at a home or at a business, only the city council has the authority to do that. We think the planning commission can serve in that capacity. The same with certificates of appropriateness, so that's reviewing historic structures. The statute does not designate that the city council or any particular historic board has to serve in that capacity. So similar comment there. And then finally, the reasonable accommodation process. So this is something that's come to our attention recently and in applications past has been the cause of some variance applications at City of Bloomington. And so if you're not familiar, reasonable accommodation relates to the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Amendments Act. And basically what that states is that persons with disabilities need to have fair, fair and equitable access to housing and city services. And so what some cities have done in that situation have created a formal waiver or exception process within their city code. If someone can demonstrate that they have a disability and the proposed waiver to the city regulation can help them ameliorate or mitigate that disability, it gives the city a tool to do that. Right now, if it's a zoning standard that they're seeking flexibility from, they have to go through a variance process, which is not ideal because as you know, variances have very distinct land use findings. In addition to that, variances run with the land from owner to owner to owner, whereas a reasonable accommodation process is related to a specific resident or applicant, whatever the case may be. So I know this was kind of thrown at you in the 11th hour or the 25th hour, so forgive us on that one, but it's just, we see it, it's kind of something that's come to our attention recently and we see it, we, and we found that there are other cities that have done this, and we think it's a good addition to the Bloomington city code. Yeah, so what did we not pursue? What did we think about doing that we didn't do? We looked at our conformance triggers for significant redevelopment and change of use issues. We looked at our, we looked at the potential for my, relief for minor setback issues. Sometimes we get very modest variance requests, which just kind of deal, deal with the accuracy of construction back in the 60s and 70s. We didn't, chose to pursue that. Dual public hearing requirements, some applications require hearings at both. We determined that that's appropriate for those application types. Rezoning, city code amendments, those things. We looked at type-two home businesses, we looked at plating application review procedures, we chose not to pursue that one. That's more handled or processed by our engineering division. Of course, we're involved with that, but that's something that could be looked at in the future, I suppose. And we looked at the easement vacation approval authority and we chose not to go forward with that one as well. So what are our next steps? Next steps are to get solicit feedback from you on all of these recommendations. I have some slides that'll hopefully help facilitate that. We can, certainly that strap polling that I saw, that's probably a helpful methodology. We are going to the city council in June, next month, and then we'll take the recommendations by the planning commission and council and draft a potentially a large ordinance to effectuate these changes. And then we would get into the public hearings in the late summer, early fall. So to facilitate the discussion, the key question number one, it really deals with those projects, number two, and number three of site plan review, whether to pursue full administrative site plan review or an expansion of the planning manager approval authority.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. One question about this is, when we do an overlay of a plan development, thinking about Lyndale retrofit plan, or we've got the South Loop plan, how would those, you know, visions that we have as a city be incorporated into this question that you have up here?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Goldsman, that's a good question. So whether final site and building plans is approved by the planning manager or the planning commission or the city council, all of the same findings have to be met. And so say there was a development while otherwise meeting our city code requirements, ideally the base zoning district, which, you know, in your example, B4, B2, whatever the case may be, ideally the base zoning that's in place is representative of what the recommendations of the plan are. And so it kind of takes care of itself to a degree. But in the cases that they're not, it would require the planning manager to make a decision based on what those district or comprehensive plan guidance is, because there's a specific finding for final site and building plans that requires consistency with the comp plan or district plans. So if the planning manager denied an application on that basis, there would be an opportunity to appeal. So similar to how some planning commission actions can be appealed, planning manager approvals can also be appealed. But that's basically what, what the analysis would have to be if there was a development that was not consistent with a district or an area plan.
To follow up, could there be inverse? So a project that was approved by the planning manager that the planning commission could actually say, eh, not, not quite what we envisioned. I know it meets the standards, but it, it doesn't meet the vision of the plan. Is there a way, I, I'm just thinking out loud here, is, we've had some applications come to us and we've had mixed opinions on if it meets the intent, even though it meets code.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman. That's a fair and good question. I don't have the, the appeal procedures to planning manager decision right in front of me. I don't know if Glenn knows that section of the code better than I do in terms of who is, has the ability to appeal, whether it be just the general public or just an applicant only, I forget.
Yeah. Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, for staff level or planning manager approvals, really it's only the applicant that would appeal and they would probably only appeal a denial because there's no notice given. So the applicant's the only party that would know about the decision.
I'm following what you're talking about. And so those are typically in areas that we've identified, district plans or like the Lyndale retrofit. So maybe that might be a narrow exception. So maybe that might be a narrow exception.
Chair, if I can add one thing to that, I mean, that's not to use that just most recent example, but when the city adopted the Penn American district plan, for example, there was a whole series of rezonings associated with that plan. That was not so easy to effectuate. But the point is, is that ideally, that's why coming out of a planning effort like an area plan or a district plan, that's why you want to try and act swiftly to implement the recommendations of the plan from a zoning perspective. To get the rules in place on the ground that match the vision of that, so yeah.
Mr. Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think on this one, key question number one, I'm in favor of option one, which is kind of staying the course here. When I look through the staff report and see all the projects that would have been approved administratively in a different process, I'm uncomfortable with some of these. And you look at some of them and the planning commission had an impact on some of these projects specifically. I'm looking like that Verizon Wireless warehouse. That was a, that was a big time win for the public. The public actually changed that application with their testimony. The applicant had to go back and revise their application based on public testimony. And yeah, I just don't like larger projects like this getting out of the public eye. I like that we are noticing for them and the public has a chance to speak on them. And also, Mr. Johnson had the table of sort of the varying cost and time impacts. It was only a few hundred more dollars. Respectfully, in the context of a development project, a couple of hundred dollars is not that much. And so a couple of weeks and a couple hundred dollars to give the public a chance to see what's going up down the street or down the highway from them, for me is worth it.
Chair Roman, can I clarify, just you meant option two, right?
Well, I was a little confused when you put this slide up because I thought in your earlier slides that option one was.
You're right, they were reversed, weren't they? I'm so sorry.
So whatever staying the course is with planning commission review is what I'm in favor of.
So Chair, let me.
Chair Roman, commissioners, I believe that would be option three, which isn't listed. Staying the course isn't listed as an option here, right?
But to clarify, you mean no changes, no increase in the amount or size of development that can be approved administratively? It would be maintaining the existing restrictions.
Forgive me, you had that secondary slide of a few tweaks that could be made. I'd be open to a couple of tweaks, but I'm certainly not in favor of taking these away whole in whole. So yeah, there were a couple of things here that if I thought about it long enough, I could probably can be convinced of, but.
I think the bullets you have here, I think are pretty easy wins. Like you could do those things easily. And then back on your previous slide before this.
So do you mean the decision point?
Nope, the one you were back on. That outlined option one.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, so I, I think what Commissioner Cookton is talking about, I'm supportive of. I think if, if the council is still interested in making some, in shrinking this area, I would at least want to retain it in areas that have adopted district plans or plans of those natures. So if the council says we want to have, we want to do something, I would say if we have a plan, Normandale, South Loop, Penn America and Lindale, those are high profile enough and we have had things that have come before us that for varying reasons, I think that there's been findings that this would work. And you know, I think of our friends at Portillo's. And that came with a recommendation, that was a good idea. And that was clearly not the sense of this body. And again, that was because of its high profile location and part of a district plan. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you Chair. I guess I am in support of streamlining site plan review with one of the options. I think, I mean, just yeah, the cost of getting entitlements can be hundreds of thousands, if not million dollars to get something through, through the city. So I think what we could do to, instead of, you know, rather than being a few hundred bucks, I think we can save tens of thousands of dollars for people and make potentially, you know, multifamily, smaller multifamily developments more feasible or smaller industrial projects more feasible. Because those are, you know, too costly to, you know, even develop these days. I think that's a good idea.
Chair Roman, if I can add one final thing about this is that these numbers, it's not an exact science. Where we landed on these numbers is just based anecdotally on looking at kind of an assortment of final site and building plans that we've reviewed since 2016.
Yep. Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Johnson, can you go back to the slide about costs and time? This one, I'm having a hard time reconciling the difference between what I'm seeing here and what Commissioner Curry was just talking about. So the application fee is relatively minor, but Commissioner Curry, you're saying there are significant other costs I'm not seeing?
Yeah, just, I mean, from what I've seen development, you know, the process of going through entitlements for development. I mean, I saw a project that was $500,000 to get through an entitlement process. I think for a use that was actually, I mean, this is in a different state, but for a use that was already permitted in that district, the development costs were half a million dollars to get, you know, the sound and the traffic study and all of these different things that add up as part of an entitlement approval. So I think, I don't know what of those things end up getting cut out of the process by making the process shorter. But I think the opportunity to reduce costs in general are much more significant.
Okay, I understand some of those costs would still be borne with an administrative review, traffic studies, et cetera. Moving on from that, my one counterpoint, Mr. Chair, to what you were talking about, limiting this to development districts is I think most of our residents don't live in development districts. And the things we're trying to prevent or the things we're trying to help by giving this, you know, public processes informing the public of things that affect them the most. And what I've learned on this commission certainly is that the things that affect people the most are what they live next to. And so for that reason, I'm not personally comfortable with limiting it to development districts because I don't think, and I'm generalizing here, but I don't think most of our residents mind as much what happens in these development districts. It's what happens outside of the development districts that they are most sensitive to.
And I would not disagree with you. My suggestion was if the council wants to do something, my preference would be to retain something. So I'm sensing a mix of thoughts here, so maybe not a clear direction for you on that.
Well, Chair, I think I could be wrong, but I, and I didn't hear from all, from everybody and you don't have to hear from everybody, but I, the sense I was getting is that you're more aligned with expanding the planning manager's existing approval authority as opposed to going to a fully administrative site plan review.
Correct.
Number two has to do with the conditional uses. So this is project number five. This has to do with amending the use table to designate uses as permitted on some level or as indicated in the staff notes within the matrix. That would be option one. Option two would be, and I should, in deference to planning manager marker, that option three is keep it the way it is today. And that's obviously, you're entitled or you're purview to do as well. But option two would be if there are specific uses that you are not in agreement or aligned with the staff recommendation to identify those and that's what we would present to the city council.
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer an option four.
Sure.
To be totally honest with you, I thought this was way too complex for this, this application. This to me could be broken off and be its own separate thing. And having a 250 page staff report and trying to get this, its proper amount of attention was just not conducive to, to me. And so I would, you know, I'd like to go through the list and go through them. And I'm not really in a position to make a bulk decision on 57 items without a full study of it. It was just too much for me.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you Chair, I agree with that, same, same position.
Okay, Commissioner Albrecht.
I have a question and that is, so I was, I was looking through this, I was thinking about the projects that we have looked at over, well, at least my five years here. The, where would bringing projects into compliance fall within either option one or option two, or does it not at all? So I'm thinking of daycare in a church that was out of compliance for a conditional use permit. But they didn't know that they were out of compliance and yet they had to come to us and get that conditional use permit, which then triggered some negative reaction from neighbors who didn't even know that the daycare was there. So I'm just kind of thinking like, where is that? Like how does bringing something into compliance fit within either option one or two, or does it not?
Yeah, Chair, forgive me, I have to, I'm trying to make a little bit of an assumption about, or a connection to your question. Do you mean making it permitted, just making it a permitted use? And there's things, there's aspects to the use that are out of compliance? Is that what you mean by that? Say like lighting or parking or? Maybe I misreading your question.
Well, they needed a conditional use permit
Yep.
for their, for their use within the church.
Right.
Nothing changed within their property, they didn't change anything about what they were doing. It didn't have any changes at all, it just was that they hadn't applied for a conditional use permit and they should have done that prior to.
Yep, so if it was a permitted use within that district as opposed to a conditional use, then they would not have, they would not have to go through the public hearing process to get a conditional use permit. They would submit if they were in violation of say the city's lighting ordinance or the site didn't meet parking, or there was some other city code violation. And those things are also reviewed as part of a building permit process for permitted uses. So when someone submits a building permit for a permitted use, we review the parking for compliance with our code. We do have provisions in our lighting ordinance, let's say you have, for change of use, you do need, have to meet the lighting ordinance. So what I'm saying is in that instance, they would have to demonstrate compliance with the city code requirements, but they would not have to go through the formal step of having to get a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you Chair, I think Commissioner Albrecht brings up a good point. We had this last meeting, for example, there was a fitness facility that moved into a previously used fitness location, conditional use permit expired because it were out of business for a year. They didn't realize it was out of business, they're using it for the same purpose as before. And I have a hard time from a perspective of common sense. And they're using it the same, it's formality, it's paperwork for the sake of paperwork versus just saying, this is common sense. Do we have to go through the whole rigmarole for that owner? And luckily, they were amenable to it, but I felt bad for that property owner as well as the tenant that they had to go through that paperwork to get that done. Now, it was for no fault of their own. So I struggled with that exact same situation. And how do we make that situation better for common sense things? Again, you can't measure common sense, that's a hard thing.
That's true, if it was common, more people would have it.
Well, that's true.
My, I can appreciate Commissioners Cookton and Curry's observation, but there's a lot here. But as I look through this list, you know, the things that are green, which are the things that the staff are proposing that we take off the list or make permitted, I think I'm okay with them. You know, and again, this is not a finalist, this is, you know, the city council is going to spend time with it too and it's going to go back through the ordinance process. And so I guess from a general sense of direction, I feel like the direction of what these are suggesting, I'm okay with.
Chair, Chair Roman and the, I appreciate that comment a lot from both of you. I think that makes all the sense in the world to me. That's why I preface this by saying that this matrix and this is kind of a bear, it's kind of, it is a lot. And so, you know, kind of backing up a little bit, I mean, we certainly, as a staff, when we were contemplating this internally, is that there was the potential that this just needs more study or further analysis. And, you know, we're not subject to any 60 or 120 day clock here. If there are aspects of what is being proposed within this study that warrants additional study or line by line analysis, staff can certainly provide that. That's not something that we're hesitant or not supportive of.
Okay.
We like talking about planning stuff.
So I think a question, a key question is for, for staff is if this specific issue might need more time? Or if the concept is there and the detail comes back to us? I'm just trying to find a way to give it some sense of direction. Yes, Commissioner Goldsman.
Timing for this, you mentioned August. So just a food for thought, we will have two new commissioners on the commission by the time we see this again. So I want to make sure that we're just cognizant of that and obviously it's going to be new content for them. That's, so for those that have been reading through staff reports, it might be more familiar to you. But just thinking about timing and that would impact that next commissioner for the next six years.
And may, or maybe this specific topic warrants another study session in July.
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, perhaps this does get broken out into a separate study session and then it works its way back into this for a final approval.
Okay.
It's a happy middle ground.
I certainly can, the city council might share the same perspective when presented this information. And so we certainly can design a process and timeline that is amenable to getting people the time and space they need to evaluate it properly.
Okay, good. Onward.
Okay, we'll keep going here. So question number three is affirming whether or not accessory dwelling units in two family dwellings should require formal zoning, site plan approval, or whether or not they can proceed directly to a building permit application. It saves the process about two to three weeks typically. We do the same, basically the same review, one way or the other. So that's why in our judgment, it doesn't, we feel that two family dwellings and ADU should be treated the same as single family dwellings.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Oh, yes.
Oh, thumbs up. I was just going to make a comment that I know housing is obviously a big initiative for the city as well as us as residents. And so anytime we can limit the burden on families that want to move to Bloomington and have more equitable housing, I'm all in support. So I would be supportive of this one.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you Chair. The AD, I mean, in ADU maybe as a, ones that are a separate structure, those, would that, would that be included in this then?
Correct.
Yeah, Chair Roman, it would. Commissioner Curry.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, that concerns me a little bit, just I think I hear, I've heard stories from, or talked with folks I know around the country where ADUs end up getting, you know, people end up building ADUs in their backyards and then end up turning them into, I don't know, whatever you call them, Airbnbs or something. And then people end up with random people coming through backyards and stuff. And so, I don't know, that's, that one seems a little, that one's a little concerning for me.
Commissioner Goldsman.
If I may, the city does not allow short term rentals. And there is very, very structured plans on how to mitigate short term rentals, any rental less than 30 days. And staff has been very supportive of removing those rentals that do pop up within the city.
And we are reviewing short term rentals this year too, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And so again, I think part of that conversation, for those who remain, may be about whether or not ADUs are, are in that pool or not.
Okay, thanks.
Chair Roman, can I clarify, one part of that conversation too is that currently ADUs are administrative approval. So there's not a public notice that gets sent to neighbors or there's not a hearing, even if it's detested. So there's not a public notice that gets sent to neighbors or there's not a hearing, um, even if it's detached. So this is just about the formal site plan zoning approval.
Got it, okay.
The planning manager has the authority to approve ADUs currently.
Okay.
That's not proposed to change.
Okay, then I would say the, I think the proposal makes sense to me.
Okay.
General thumbs up on that?
Okay, thank you, uh, key question four, it had to do with kind of that series of that grouping of projects that had to do with granting the planning commission. Uh, additional authority to approve applications subject to appeal, so all the conditional use permits and interim use permits. Final development plans that contain no flexibility, variances, ten extensions and certificates of appropriateness.
So you're asking for our opinion on expanding our empire?
And I asked the city council the same question, so. But it is a way to streamline, it is a way to streamline development.
I have a question about this one. Um. We don't always agree.
Mm-hmm.
As a group. And sometimes the vote is split-ish. Um. Or the vote is no, I assume that that would be. An appeals process that that wouldn't go directly to the city council for approval, it would bypass us then at that point.
I don't think it would automatically go, the applicant would have to request an appeal.
Right, so if the applicant requested an, let's say.
Yep.
We said no. By a very close split vote. Then this, if the applicant. Requested an appeal, that appeal would then go directly to the city council?
Chair Roman, Commissioner Albrecht, that's correct. Currently, I should add too, currently tie votes. Go to the city council on applications, say you only have six members present and it's three, three.
And so in the absence of that next level, a tie vote becomes a no?
It, uh, well. I'm, I'm fairly certain depending on the application type, because there's different procedural.
So again, it's something we go in this direction.
For final site and building plans, it goes to city council for tie vote, I'm almost positive.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioners, I would recommend that too for all of these type of approvals, that if there's a tie vote, that it would automatically.
Okay.
Move on, just like with final site and building plans today.
Commissioner Goldson.
Thank you, Chair, um, one of the things that has been, you know, I've been on this commission for. Almost six years, has been really frustrating is that when this body. Votes no. In, in mass, right? It goes to city council regardless of appeal or not, goes to city council, and then it gets put on a consent, consent agenda. And gets approved without discussion. Um, and so one of the things that I look at this question here is saying, okay, we have the. Authority to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
But there's. As an app, somebody who's going to be applying for, uh, one of these, there's no. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time they're going to appeal. And then it will go back to city council for consent, so we lose that authority. Really, very, very quickly and all intents and purposes, because that appeal process is so. Easy, which I want it to be easy, but I, I think the point is, is I want to make sure if that does have an appeal process, that it actually gets discussed. By council, that they take into account our conversation or our stance, I feel like, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay, Chair Roman and just, and Commissioner Goldsman, just to clarify a couple of things, so when it's an application that the city council. Uh, um, uh, is the approval authority on. And the planning commission makes a recommendation and it's put on the consent agenda, it's put on the consent agenda with the planning commission recommendation. That's the policy. So if it's for denial, what it's, what's on the consent agenda is denial, that's what's on the, in the consent agenda. Um, on the situation of an appeal. Um, some appeals, according to our procedures, require actually a hearing. At the city council, which would require them not to be able to act on the consent agenda, and I'm. Fairly certain even ones that don't require a hearing, uh, historically have always been actually discussed through an appeal, Glenn would have a better historic. Uh. Um, or, uh, past, uh, experience to draw on, but that's my knowledge.
So I think I.
Yeah, one, one thing to add to that, uh, Chair Roman, Commissioners. Uh, if there's a split recommendation between staff and the planning commission. Historically, we have not put it on the consent agenda so that there's. The ability for discussion by the council.
So yeah, I think my hunch is, I, I like this direction. And I think if, I think the idea of an appeal. Getting a full. Agenda item ma- makes sense.
Uh-huh. Agreed.
Because again, if it's, if it is truly an appeal, this probably needs more. More face time. Commissioner.
Chair, the, the last quick thing I'll add to that is that. Um, uh. What, what this, I think what these changes contemplate is the ninety percent outcome.
Yep.
Um, if we're bringing, uh, if we're bringing you an application after application after application, that's just denial, 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 denial.
Yeah.
We're not doing our job effectively on the front end of things, or you just have some, you have a very pugnacious, uh. Group of, uh, developers or landowners in town, but the point is, is that, um, you know, talking about appeals and. Denials, I mean, that's, that's the lower percentage, uh, situation in most cases.
Yeah, it is, and I think, but I think to the point of what Commissioner Goldson was saying is that's for people on this body who. You know, I think generally take the work seriously. Um, it, that. Something that we felt strongly enough, I think the goal is for the council to. Give it a little bit of time to.
If I may, just ask one question here. Um, IUPs. Um. We currently have. Two IUPs of the same use. So one is no longer allowed and then. The two that are actually. In operation fall within number two.
Correct.
Yeah, and I would add one quick clarification that we did not evaluate all the interim use designations in our use table, we only evaluated the two interim uses that are required city council approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Johnson, I just want to clarify one thing, and I'm sure I heard it right, but I've never heard this before, so. When we have, when city council is the final decision makers and we're a recommending body. And we recommend denial of an application and it was scheduled to go on their consent agenda. If they don't pull it from the consent agenda and they accept their consent agenda, that application is denied.
That's correct.
Thank you.
There's the, well, let me make one clarification of that, in the case of a denial. Um, the, and. Uh, I don't need, I don't, I'm not requesting Kevin speak to this. But in the case of a denial, the, um, cities and the city attorney's office, uh, want to ensure that there is robust and adequate public record. Um, to mitigate the risk associated with some type of legal action against the city to protect the taxpayers of the city. Um, and so that is why in some instances, even if it was placed on the consent agenda, they might pull it. Uh, to ensure that there is a robust public record for the reason why. So that's, you know, I mean, there's a lot of nuance in all this stuff, right?
Yep. Um, so the general sense of this topic. Of essentially moving. The vast majority of this. To final decision at this body, Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm in favor, I do think we would want to keep this in mind when we're talking about our calendar on the annual basis. Honestly, I, I think one thing I've noticed this year is we, we may have gone a little aggressive on how many meetings we've cut out, because we've had some pretty long ones and. We're kind of piling on a number of study items on the same night and maybe some of them are losing some deserved attention. And so if we're adding more stuff to us, we may want to go back and consider adding some of our old meetings back.
Not sure we're adding anything here, we're just removing the next level.
I thought we were adding ourselves as a fancy. Term of. Something, something of something.
Correct me around, we hear almost all of these things already, correct?
Yes, Chair Roman, Commissioners, I agree, I don't think you're adding to your workload, um. But you're kind of reducing the city council workload if assuming most of the items aren't appealed. Uh, I think the one exception to that would be tent extensions. I think we've had two, in my twenty-eight year, or twenty-eight years, we've only had two applications for tent extensions. I do believe those go straight to city council now, so. Maybe once a decade, y'all get an extra. Uh, item.
But in spite of, in spite of that. Not being more work, your other point about agenda planning, I think is a good one. Especially again, as we. We were having a conversation before the meeting about, uh, our annual review of, um, the members of the board and our individual. Attendance and compliance with city, uh, code. And I think when we cancel a lot of meetings, that tips the balance of. How often people are able to attend meetings. So, but generally the sense of this item. Is a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Um, that concludes it. Um, right, yeah, thank you.
Good work, Commissioner Goldson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I just wanted to state, this is a ton of work. So thank you for putting it together and, and trying to explain it to us, I know it's a lot to chew, but. It's, uh, it's, uh, great work, so thank you.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I just have one comment. Uh, Mr. Johnson, did you create this logo, this streamlined development?
I did not, that was my colleague Tom Ramler Olson, and, uh, he helped me prepare all these materials, uh, tonight, he couldn't be here tonight, but. Um, he, uh, was, uh, uh, my partner in crime in this project, so.
Well, well done on the logo.
Multiple ones, there's the, there's that one, there's the.
There's a lot going on there.
There's no.
Two different logos.
Animation though.
Well, that was.
Seeing the animation.
That was Mike, that was Mike Palermo's work for us.
It's a study session.
I'll let, I'll let Mike know yours.
I miss the animations, but it is great.
All right, thank you, uh, item number four is a review of our meeting. Synopsis from April fourth. And according to my read, Commissioners Curry and McGovern were absent. If I may have a motion, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair, I move to approve the draft April fourth, twenty twenty-four planning commission's meeting synopsis.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Item number five is the policy and issue update, planning manager Marker Guard.
Chair Roman, Commissioners, our next meeting will be June sixth. And we have four items on that agenda. Uh, two conditional use permits for restaurants. Uh, one for full tilt tavern expansion. And one for a conversion of a convenience store to. Uh, pizza restaurant, Pigate My Pizza. Uh, and then we have two. Items, one at Kennedy High School and one at Jefferson High School for. Uh, expansion of the athletic fields with additional seating. Um, and then two weeks after that, on June twentieth, we have four items. On that agenda, a public hearing. For a conditional use permit, um, for indoor recreation and entertainment. At seventy-seven hundred West Old Chocopee Road. We also have a public hearing on city code amendments for cannabis business standards, so the. Study meeting we discussed tonight, study item we discussed tonight. Uh, third is an update on the Riverview Corridor Transit Project. And then fourth, a study item on single room occupancy or, uh, SRO housing standards. That's what we have coming up.
All right, and, um, just a reminder, if. The council determines that an EAW is required, then we would be continuing items, those, those stadium items on. June sixth.
Uh, Chair Roman, Commissioners, that would be our recommendation, um, would be to indefinitely continue those items to allow the EAW to be prepared.
So they'll be on the agenda one way or the other. What we need to do with that information is based on what comes out of the city council.
Uh, Chair Roman, that's correct.
Okay. Other items for this topic, Commissioner Goldson.
Thank you, Chair, um, for the three people watching on TV, there are two seats that are, um. Accepting applications for new commissioners, uh, so I know that the application window is open till next week.
Monday, I think.
All right, soon, so.
Monday is the deadline.
If, if you find this thrilling, feel free to apply and. Yes, you should be here.
If you are one of those regular. As, as, as some of our members used to be.
Come join us.
Anything else, Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair, um, you know, I was just thinking. Uh. On the last meeting, uh, we had the public testimony. About, uh, when we were talking about reducing, uh, speed limits and. The mom came in to talk about her son who had been hit by a car. Twice, I think, in two separate years and. We were apparently went through, we had to go through a holistic, citywide. Analysis of. Speed limits to change something there. I don't know if there's like a. Process in place that, you know, how we, how we go about amending speed limits in certain instances or. Safety things in certain instances for the road, but I don't know if that's something that we should be going over as a planning commission to say. You know, at least around schools or something, we should just be able to do something within like a one month. Timeframe instead of like three years, I don't know if there's any.
I think you're right, and I think what I recall from that conversation with, um, Mr. Roberts is that now we can. Until now, we didn't have any. Mechanism in our code. To allow that, so, um, Glenn might not think otherwise, but I think in general, you're right. And it just didn't exist until two weeks ago, or until Monday when the city council approved it.
Chair Roman, we do have an engineering representative with us tonight, uh. Brian Hanson, I don't know if you would have an answer to that question?
Uh, thanks, Glenn, uh, no, I think Chair Roman said it well, I think that was the issue, um, it wasn't that. We, the city wasn't aware of that, or the engineering staff wasn't aware of it, we didn't have a mechanism to be able to do that, and now. Uh, we do have that mechanism, so that, um, is going to be implemented and as, uh. Kirk said at the meeting, uh, the last meeting, that. That particular area school zone is slated to have some school zone speed limits installed prior to the start of class next year in the fall of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so then on the, like, in the sa- in terms of the safety. Aspect of it, because I think we had basically two, uh. Separate topics that we discussed together, uh. Speed calming and speed limits, uh, and then we obviously just finished the speed limits part, so does that mean that there's no? Um. No mechanism to improve safety? Or it's like, to go through a quicker process of, you know, increasing. Controls, I guess, around schools or, um, sensitive areas? Using speed controls or?
Uh, well, as, as, as Kirk Robert stated last time, we didn't have the ability, um, to do, to implement those speed. Um, speed limit changes until most recently, um, we do, I know that our traffic engineering staff does review. Requests, um, and we do evaluate if there are safety concerns and issues and we can act upon those. Um, I, without getting into too much detail about the specific location, I know that there had been, you know, previous studies and previous things that have been. Proposed to, you know, help to mitigate some of those concerns in the past. Um, that actually went, uh, as far as the council and, and weren't approved at that time, so there had been efforts in the past to. Address some of the concerns that staff had heard, so, um, I think that the school speed limits now having the ability to install those. Um, is going to be a good tool to help address some of those concerns that we heard at the planning commission meeting.
Okay, well, now that I'm thinking about it. I think as part of those speed calming, uh, traffic calming discussion. One of the aspects that we talked about was like. Local residents paying for it, or how are things going to get paid for, so it sounds like to me that we don't have. Like a, a clear process to expedite a change, I don't know when that traffic calming. Topic is going to come back up and get that finished, but I think that seems like something that we should probably just get done if we have no mechanism of doing it right now, right?
Yeah, the traffic calming, I mean, that's a different program that we've had in place for quite a while, and there's a process in place for that, um. And it does allow residents that are interested to, you know, to bring forward a, a, uh, application to see, you know, and, and address a concern. Um, that we'll look into, but with many of those things, I mean, as much as we'd like to address it right away and as soon as possible, I agree with you on that part. Uh, we also need to do our due diligence on our side to get analysis, to collect the data, I understand what the issue actually is, because. Um, if we try to address an issue, um, that comes up. That may be a, a one, a one-off event, you know, if there's a, if there's a problem that's, that's persistent that we should address and make sure that we address it correctly. As opposed to just reacting to one single problem, obviously we don't want any incidents out there, but we just want to make sure that we understand, you know, what the best mechanism is to address that issue.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, I, it just seems to me, seems crazy.
I think there's a couple of things there, if I'm hearing both of you correctly, I think on the school question, I think there is a intention from the staff to. Holistically deal with each of the, I don't know, twenty-nine, something like that, school facilities that we have in the city. And I think I saw in the council minute yesterday that, that there are three of those areas that are going to be dealt with this summer. It's the Olson-Jefferson corridor, it's the Poplar Bridge corridor, and it's the Oak Grove corridor. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hanson? And I think it'll take time for them to assess the remaining ones. And so there's the school question, which my instinct is that that's, that's happening. It just will be a process of it happening. The other thing you're talking about, which is a good program, I understand the traffic, the traffic calming or the traffic, that's, that's a when asked kind of a program. It's not a proactive program. Am I wrong on that?
Correct. That is a, a program that's in place for residents to initiate local traffic concerns that they deem need to be addressed by the city and they can bring those to our attention. So things that maybe not be in our purview at that point, but they want to bring those forward, there's a process for them to do so. Correct.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I don't know if there's anything to do that we can keep that from, something like that from happening or be more responsive. It was just alarming.
Yeah. I think you're right. I think you're right. And I think the best answer, I, I own myself have for when someone's in front of me is, this is the group of people who are here today. And the council that we have today, I think it's a different day and it's a different. I, I've seen more responsiveness to a lot of those things in the last number of years than my experience was before that. So I think I agree with you. And I just think the answer to folks is this group of people sitting here and this group of people who sit here on Mondays are not the same people who sat here when this was brought up five years ago. Generally speaking, I think it's, it's a, it's a different day and, you know, staff turnover and the perspective evolves over time.
Okay.
So you're right. That's, I'm not, you're right.
I just didn't know what there is that we can do to help. That's all.
And I want to reiterate too, I, I, I a hundred percent agree with you that, you know, we want to address, you know, having one incident is one incident too many in our, in our estimation, obviously. But sometimes, you know, there isn't always maybe a quick fix, though, as much as we'd like to be able to say, yes, there's an incident right here, we can go out there and fix that right away. Oftentimes, the solution isn't a quick fix and it's more systematic. And there's other issues at play that, you know, it's not as easy as, as installing Asign or doing something like that, even though that may, you know, show that there's, there's been a response to something, it may not be the right response. So I think that's kind of the balance that we're always trying to make is how can we address this as quickly as possible, but also address it in the correct way as possible? So we're not just trying to continue to react, but be proactive in how we address it.
Okay. Other, thank you, Brian. Other items for the group? All right. Seeing done, we are adjourned until June sixth.